All right, I would call this meeting to order. Document the time at 6:36. And if you would stand for the pledge for me, I would appreciate that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, and welcome to our February edition. And Tori, if you are settled enough, could you lead us in a mindfulness session? And just for our guests here, we, in honor of our elementary school team who came here, gosh, must be almost eighteen months ago now. It was well over a year. Four years ago? Oh my gosh.
When the kids came and did it with us?
What date is this today? Yeah, anyway, they came in and they presented to us the things they were doing for mindfulness, and we decided as a board to adopt it. So, beginning of every meeting, we start with a session of mindfulness. So if you would join us, we would greatly appreciate that. Tori, I'll turn it over to you.
So find a nice seat. And we're going to arrive here and do our job here. So just take a nice deep breath in. You can breathe out through your mouth. Breathe in through your nose. And you breathe out through your mouth. And then you can just find a regular breathing pattern of breathing in through your nose and out through your nose. And you just feel your feet on the floor, your butt in the chair. And we're just going to arrive here together on the breath. And can notice, in your breathing, as you breathe in, notice if you're holding tension in your shoulders, you kind of breathe out into that. Tension in your head, thinking too much through the day. Breathe in. On this day of great celebration of chocolate and Hallmark love, I want to send out a wish for all people. May all people be seen and heard and feel valued for who they are right now. May there be more love in the world. Take a deep breath in. And breathe out. And we'll open our eyes as we come together together.
Thank you very much. Always good get oriented to here and now. All right. Agenda review and adjustments. Anything you guys had seen? Got a, just a couple from this side here, and that is, we have just one adjustment in the consent. We'll have a handout for you. It's just about a fifty dollar or so change to the approval of the bills section. I'd like to also, as well, we have our legislators here this week for annual powwow on what's going on in Montpelier and where we stand on those issues. So if I can, I'd like to request that we move that section up under the public comments. So we'll do Focus on Learning Public Comments, and then have Clem and Deanna join us there. Does anybody have any concerns about moving that adjustment item, agenda item? Sorry. All right. And other than that, I think that's it. All right. So we will turn it over. Sean, do you want to kick off the Focus on Learning? I see you've got J.C. back. That's good.
Yes. So J.C. Puttletz, our wellness coordinator, is here to kind of give us an update on wellness in the school district. And for many of you, remember, this is the foundation of our work, in that if we can improve organizational wellness, both for our staff and for our students, our belief is we will have healthier, healthier teachers, we will have healthier students, we will increase readiness to learn time, and ultimately, outcomes will be, academic outcomes will be, and social emotional outcomes, will be improved over time. So I think the last time that J.C. was here was like, maybe two years ago, year and a half, three years ago. And so she's going to talk a little bit about some of our programs, give some updates on that, some highlights of some things that have happened since then. And then also, she has prepared some recommendations that are listed in the policy in italics and for our policy conversation later in the evening.
Great.
So this is my fourth year here, and wow, the time has flown. I look back on the last three years, and I was like, wow, this lot has changed and a lot has been done. So with that, I wanted to say that the mindfulness, I believe, started the year before I started. So it may have even been longer than four years ago. It probably does feel like it was just yesterday.
It was in 2011.
Yes, exactly. It was before I started. You already had mindfulness, kind of the grassroots was started, and you hired me as part of my job was to fan that flame.
And I'm only twenty-six.
So I wanted to show, it's an overview of what I'm going to cover tonight, nutrition programs, mindfulness and movement, the, some about our employee wellness, as well as other initiatives that some people, that doesn't really fall under wellness. Well, it does. And I love to show this graphic, because this is from the CDC. It's the, basically, the school health index uses several modules and several segments of wellness, much like the wellness wheel. But in this case, this is about our students. And so everything from community involvement, family engagement, to health services, physical activities, social emotional climate, it covers the gamut of wellness. As to what our government says, this is what you should be looking at in terms of the health and wellness of your students. And I love this, because it's very comprehensive, and it shows the community surrounding that So I'm going to start off some information about our nutrition programs. We still have the Vermont Food Bank coming. We still partner with them to provide kind of a supplemental nutrition on site. Two programs, the Backpack Program, which is a program, each week I give out a bag of food to students whose families have signed them up for the program. It's nonperishable food, and it's confidentially given to them. And when I started here a few years ago, I had an average of sixty to eighty students, and it has increased every year, and now I have over a hundred and ten students on my list. That has posed a little bit of a problem with the Vermont Food Bank, because they capped it at a hundred, but because I'm such a great person in giving them all the data that they want and they need, and having them on site often, they've increased that for us. So we're very lucky to have that. As well, the Veggie Van Gogh Program, which several years ago was called the School Pantry. And what that is, is twice a month, the Vermont Food Bank comes to our school and provides fresh fruit and vegetables. And it's actually my favorite job here on site. And the reason is, is because I get to see all the parents coming in, coming through line. I get to see all the students coming in, coming through line. They are so thankful, they always talk to me, they're excited, and then they can take whatever they want, from apples, cabbage, potatoes, carrots, and then seasonal items when they're available. Last year was the first year that we ran it school year, excuse me, full year. It is typically a school year kind of program. So they would come only from September until June. Last year, we were able to get one drop in July and one drop in August as well. So they increased the giving, and parents still came. I was afraid no one was going to come, because school was in session, but no, the community members came out. Several years ago, we, our numbers were around five hundred and fifty a month. This year, we've been tracking, and I always have at least three hundred, sometimes three hundred and fifty to seven hundred, or three hundred and seventy-five. It has increased over the last few weeks. Last time we ran it, it was at three eighty. So why do they increase? That's a good question, if anyone was wondering. My guess is, it has to do with promotion. I don't think that there has been an increased need in the community. What I see is that once a program starts, it takes a few years to gain momentum. So I don't, I don't think that this is going to continue to increase over time. I think it's just increased, and we may start to see a plateau, but we'll see, by the time I come back in here, three more years, we'll see what those numbers do. So that is one of our programs, one of our big programs. Another thing I wanted to talk to you about is our breakfast in the classroom. So when I started, breakfast was available before school, so before the bell. And we, I think it was two years ago, actually, halfway through the school year, Sarah Robb, who was a new principal that year, agreed that, you know what, having breakfast in the classroom would be beneficial for these students. So we created, we started halfway through the school year, and it took off brilliantly. The numbers increased in JFK, and students were getting fed. And immediately, the nurses saw that they had fewer headaches and fewer students coming down to the classroom, or coming down to the health office to get food in the morning. So that was one way that we were helping our students be ready to learn, is providing them the food that they need once they get into the classroom. The other thing was that we were providing all the students at that time, because it was new program, we weren't really sure how we were going to run it, all the students were getting food. So there's plenty of food available for the students in the classroom. We've since honed that, and now provide, they can order what they want. So there's a little bit more choice on the sheets, and they can order ahead. So this year, we took that into the middle school. So this year, the middle school students also get breakfast in the classroom. And we have found that, well, especially for the middle school students, they're able to get to class a little bit faster, so they're not waiting. For those of you who weren't aware, in the past, we had tables set out for middle school students to choose their own breakfast. By providing in the classroom, they get from one class to another faster, they can eat in the classroom, and they have more time together as a class, in their advisory time, to kind of, to eat, to reflect on the day. The teacher can check in with them, so it gives them some time with their teacher to process how they're doing. The breakfast in the classroom has shown increased participation over time. And I don't know what Rebecca has shown you in the past, but from the numbers that we've seen, before we had the community eligibility, we saw around two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty students having breakfast. Remember, that was before school started. Once we changed to the community eligibility program, where all students could receive free breakfast, it increased a little bit by about a hundred students. But once we brought it into the classroom, that's when the significant increases have started. We've seen more of a rise in participation. And we see routinely about five hundred students ordering meals. All right. So, again, and that's after the bell. So the next few items that I'm going to talk about are, these are the programs where I get to interact more with the students. Student Voice and Meals. What that is about is, I have had the ability to actually sit down with students and ask them, what do they want to see on the menu? What do you want to eat? What do you like to eat? How can we change things? Last year, I had a group of middle school students who actually did some taste tests with the Abbey Group. First of all, I don't want to forget to say this, the Abbey Group has been awesome. Every time I go to them and ask them questions, they have been right on it right away. I've just had nothing but good things to say about them. And it's so easy to work with them, because they're so willing to make these changes happen for us in the, in the school. So whenever a student wants to be heard, I talk with that student, I kind of give them a background about why the meals are the way they are. For instance, they complain that there's not enough salt. Well, we have restrictions on salt, and you're not going to have meals that are salty here that they are at home, because at home, you get to kind of put in as much salt as you want. So we talk to them about why the food is a little bit different, why there's more grains, whole grains, why there's less fat, less salt. And then, then if they really want to make some changes, we go and we talk to the Abbey. And we have done that on several occasions, sat in the back room with them, had a little powwow, done some taste tests. So that gives the students the feeling that they're being heard. In health class, the middle school health class, Vicki Wilensky is the health teacher. This year, we tried something new. We're doing that classes collaborative, and my involvement has been the nutrition side of things. We do this to allow the students to, well, first of all, meet other staff members. So Declan, who is from Center Point, thank you. Declan's from Center Point. He gets to come into the classroom and talk about his expertise. Thomas Shear, who's our behavior guru in the middle school, gets to talk about some of the social emotional learning. Amanda, who is our guidance counselor, she's in there, and I'm in there. And we kind of guest teach, so to speak, but it gives the students the ability to see all of us. So out of that class, again, I interact with the students, we talk about things, and the information I get from them, I bring back into the Abbey Group, or I go talk with others. So that has been a wonderful class, and I'm going to talk more about that and about mindfulness in a minute. This year, I also had the opportunity, I was invited by the fourth grade teachers to come in to do some wellness enrichment. And this past fall, it was actually in the district newsletter, I wrote an article about it. I was able to teach the kids all about food labels, and the food groups, and get them some, you know, hands-on. We actually brought in real packages, and they kept their snack packages over a week. And then we looked at the snack labels, and they were like, oh, wow. They really learned a lot about it. And one student even said that now when she, when her mom stops at the gas station, she thinks a little bit about what she's going to eat, or what she's going to ask mom to buy, or when they, when they run in. So these are ways that I get to interact with the students and get their feedback about that, you know, what they want to see in the school. And we continue the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables program that's been going on, I think, since the year I started. So this would be the fourth year that that's been going on? Maybe even before that?
That's been going, that's been going longer.
That has been longer.
Probably over ten years we've been doing that.
Oh my gosh. Wow.
You get the same thing I do.
Yes. Yeah. Well, also, I wasn't here, so it's kind of hard to. The thing about that program is, it allows our elementary students to try fresh fruits and vegetables. It's a snack program that they can get. And it also allows the students to take a little break. Sometimes they walk down, grab the bag of food, and bring it back to the classroom. So I often see children running with their blue buckets back and forth to the classroom, to the cafeteria for that. Keep on time. Oh, we're almost, sorry, at seven o'clock. Wow. So mindfulness and movement. When I first started, mindfulness was kind of fanning the flame. When I first started, there were, there was an actual program we were using called Modern Mindfulness. And that has now kind of transformed into, mindfulness is now being used as a tool for other initiatives that our schools have brought in. For instance, Responsive Classroom is a, is what they use in the elementary school and developmental designs in the middle school. These are programs where they focus on the, well, the social emotional learning. They first, they take the first six weeks of a school year, and they really focus on the norms of the classroom, things that are expected, how to work through, you know, especially when you come in from fifth grade to sixth grade, it's a huge jump. So it gives the students the time to process what it's like to be in this classroom. It also gives them time to form themselves as a classroom team. And mindfulness and reflective practices are used in those pervasively, thinking about what you've done, where you're going. So mindfulness as a program, I wouldn't say that it is, you know, a structured program. It is, it is so intertwined in everything we do here, that it's, it's, it's just pervasive. The Mindful City Project, which was something we had done with the Center for Mindful Learning and the city of Winuski, officially ended last year, and one of the big positives that came out of that was the police officers have an after-school program with our students, and they call it the Mindful Mentors Athletic League, and they practice mindfulness for a few minutes before they go and do some sort of activity. And we did that last year as a part of the Mindful City Project, and we've continued it now this year. We also continue to support educator practice of mindfulness. I was actually quite pleased last year, when I went to introduce myself to some of the new fourth grade teachers last school year, and found out that all of them had already had some kind of mindfulness or mindfulness training, or use mindfulness in classrooms. I was like, oh, that makes my job easy. So it's nice to see the people that are coming in have already been exposed to it in their other, in other schools or in their education. One of, I wouldn't really call this a mindful group. This is a group of students in the middle schools, the middle school WIN. WIN stands for What I Need, and it's a time of the day when teachers can kind of take the time to work with particular students on things that they're kind of lacking, and give them some extra time. So it's like enrichment time, or let's get you on track time. And sometimes, we take some students out who have what they need, and we give them a little bit more. And Amanda Spencer, the guidance counselor and I, have been working with small groups of students over the last several weeks. Once a week, we meet with some students, and we do some reflective practices with them. The group of students we have right now are all boys, mostly, well, the sixth and seventh grade boys, and we're working together with them, or we're reading a book about bullying, but we're also using that as kind of a platform to launch discussions around that. And then, the last thing I wanted to talk about for movement is, the Spartans in Motion, there's nothing bad to say about that program, the kids love it. And this point is just an expectation. They come in from fifth grade, and they're like, yeah, we're ready to try this. And the middle school teachers have done a fabulous job to keep that program going and keep it strong, even in the depths of winter, when you can't get outside. They have some very creative ways of keeping the middle school students moving in the classroom during their, and they actually have a dedicated time for movement built into the, the school day. And we are coming up on our winter games next week, so they get to compete and kind of show off what they've been doing in the last few weeks. The other highlight that I love is, and I can't take credit for this, but I have to tell you about it, one of our, one of the staff members in the middle school behavior, the wellness room, Mohammed, had noticed that some of the high school students weren't getting to have some gym time first thing in the morning. So the middle school students get open gym in the morning, and the high school students didn't have that, so he was able to start to bring them into the cafeteria, so that they could also play basketball and get some movement before the school day. So it was really fun to watch him do that. So those are ways that they, you'll notice in the wellness policy, that we state that we're going to do our best to give students thirty minutes of physical activity a day. And that's one of the ways that we do it, the Spartans in Motion program, in opening up spaces for movement in, at other times of the day. So employee wellness, I'm not going to click on these links, I'm going to ask you to do that on your own, so you can kind of look at it on your own. But I do want to point out, this year, I started a Winuski Wellness Blog, and in it is where I put all the information for our employees to basically live a healthy life. We have things like discounts for teachers on there. Several yoga studios have reached out to me, offering discounts. The Edge and other gyms in the area offer discounts. So every time those come up, I kind of send the note out to the employees, and then there's more information on the blog. The blog is also where I keep all of the wellness challenges that we host, and information from the Vermont Education Health Initiative, VHI. All of that information is on there, too. VHI Path, Path is Planned Action Towards Health, and this is how our employees are keeping track of their health. If they choose, we have five wellness leaders, one in each building plus me. And then we have a hundred and thirty-five registered users, so a hundred and thirty-five staff and teachers are using the VHI Path. It's not active users, it kind of varies year to year, but we do have a hundred and thirty-five registered users. The Healthy Life Survey, this is something that, basically, our employees will assess their health or answer questions about their health. It gives me some really valuable information. For instance, are you getting enough sleep? Or are you anxious? Are you going to the doctor to find out what your numbers are? It allows me to understand where there may be some gaps in what our employees need or need to focus on. One example, or actually, a pretty big example of that, is we noticed that there was a little higher amount of anxiety kind of going on. So when I saw this data a couple of years ago, I talked to the wellness leaders, and I said, you know, what do you think we should do about this? So during our Wellness Day one year, I brought in someone from Northwestern Family Institute to talk about recognizing compassion fatigue and vicarious trauma, and what you can do as an employee, you know, as a teacher, to mitigate those risks. And then we also reached out to Center Point, and they came in last year and talked with some of our teachers about, you know, what are some things you're feeling? And they've given us some proposals as to things that we can bring in to work with the teachers on self-care. And Center Point is going to be here on our Wellness Day, giving two different talks, so I'm really excited about having them here. Wellness Day, March 6th, this is another one of my big fun things I get to do. Thank you for having me here, I have a lot of fun. I have several activities planned, everything from basketball in the gym, to self-care workshops, art-related things, mindfulness and art. Wellness Day is the day where our employees get to take care of themselves. They get to reconnect with their colleagues, they get to try some new things that maybe they've never tried before, such as badminton volleyball, jazzercise. So I reach out to people in the community, but I really look for our staff to share their passions. So most of this is our staff members saying, hey, I love to make jewelry, I want to do a jewelry-making, you know, workshop with some folks, or I love, oh, one of them this year is bullet journaling. Has anyone ever heard of bullet journaling? Yes? Okay, I've never heard of it before, over here. Not you in the back room. It's a new way of basically organizing your life. So you all remember the day planners from the nineties, right? Or maybe not. This is like, basically, an open book, and you use your own creativity to keep yourself planned. And I was like, wow, that sounds like a lot of fun. So one of our staff members, who I never imagined that she'd come forward, was like, I want to share this. I was like, great. So that's going to be one of our activities on Wellness Day. Oh, let's see, what else? We also do our best to bring yoga on site. I can't tell you how many people are asking me, oh, are we going to have yoga? So I reach out often, and every year, we seem to have a new yoga person come in and love to work with us. So we have this, right now, I actually have two yoga classes, two different yoga teachers coming on, which is huge, and teaching yoga to our employees after school. And then, I've already mentioned Center Point and the self-care workshops, and then that's going to be an ongoing thing. I think we're going to be doing something also in August around that. Other initiatives that I kind of, I wouldn't say I coordinate everything, but I definitely have my hand in. I am the one who kind of coordinates the school garden, but I don't actually do the work. I'm more of a project manager there. Carrie Mon, one of our reading specialists, and Dave McNally, a science teacher, has spearheaded that. All I do is just kind of make sure it's on track, and they're the ones who work with the students in the classrooms, or after school, or as Carrie, last year, all summer long, she worked with two of our students to make sure the garden was fed and watered and weeded, and unfortunately, we have lots of rabbits in the area, and so they got to the tomatoes. And then, oh, the clothing drive and giveaway. So another basic need everyone needs is winter gear. And this year, Grace Holcomb, who is a new guidance counselor in JFK, she is also a family liaison, she spearheaded this year's clothing drive and giveaway, and I was, basically, I was her sidekick. Whatever she needed, I helped her do. And we had two events. One was an actual clothing giveaway event, and I could not tell you how many people were there. Within an hour, so much of the stuff was gone. We worked with local businesses and local resale shops to donate clothes. A lot of parents came forward, so we had a lot of clothes, we sorted all the clothes, we laid it out, and the students and families came in and had lots and lots of clothing. I mean, there were big bags being taken away. We had so much clothing, and people still donating, that we had a second one on parent-teacher conference nights. So that was another one. We finally got rid of almost all of it. However, we still continue to have a need, and it's mostly in the winter gear department. So even last week, I was still looking for boots for young women, and sometimes they just lose the boots or lose things, and we do our best just to make sure that they still have them. So, and I talked with- have them. So, and I talked with Grace. I was like, Grace, I feel like we serve more than 95 students. She's like, yeah, I kind of stopped putting kids' names in and just started, you know, with still, and I know for me, I probably served at least 10 other kids who I never put their names in, and Grace probably the same. So that's upwards above 100 students who receive some sort of winter gear, mostly jackets and boots, but snow pants, gloves, hats. We continue to support the recycling and composting program because in 2020, we all need to be compliant with composting. So that program is still ongoing. And then the last thing is the wellness policy, which you're going to talk about later. But what I'd like to say about that is just a reminder that the wellness policy came into existence as a part of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. So all schools were required to have a wellness policy. It's very heavy on the nutrition and physical activity end of it, but you'll notice we do have something, some lines in there about social emotional learning or social emotional wellness. The only big change in there that I wanted to point out was we just added some information, the nurses. So I reach out to a wide variety of people, just like that, that wellness wheel showed. So the nurses' feedback, we added some information there for that. And it helps support that school-based health clinic that we have been looking at doing.
Thank you.
Yeah. 7:08.
I usually ask if somebody has any questions first, but I'm going to jump right in. Because when I started, I don't know what I've been, seven years now, something like that, it was about math and English and, you know, kids in school. I want to thank you for the job you do. I know you're, you were hired for it, you're doing it. But to do it, the breadth of what you have here is amazing. It's not about, it's about getting ready, the kids ready to learn and, and the staff ready to teach.
Yep.
Or clean or, or whatever else. But just the breadth of what you have here is amazing to, to think that, you know, we do this just to get kids ready to learn.
Yes.
And we do it hopefully for the teachers to be able to continue to teach at a high level. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a lot of anecdotes I could share, but we'd be here all night. One, one point on that is, we had a student who was very disruptive and they couldn't figure out why she was having such a hard time. And they finally figured out that her feet were wet. She had been out in the snow, her socks were soaking wet, her boots had holes in them. I gave her a pair of socks and a pair of boots, and suddenly she was ready to go back to the classroom. It was, and it was, it took us a little while to figure out what was going on, but once we did, we wrapped around that child and got her back to where she needed to be. And that's, that's something that we're very proud to say, that we're able to do that.
Sometimes the answer is so simple, it's easy to overlook.
Yeah.
Any comments? Sorry, I jumped right in. I normally ask, but.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Well, this is a school highlight.
Yeah. Without that, the, the rest of it is interesting, but it isn't going to happen well. All right. So with that, we'll move on to public comments. I know we have a few. Zoe, start?
Pass this around. This is what I'm sharing.
And if you would just for us introduce and.
Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Zoe Morris. I am an organizer with Parents and Youth for Change. And I'm here to give you all an update on what's been going on with the Winter Transportation Pilot. So I'm just going to read this letter that you all have a copy of. This is the fifth week of the Winuski School District Winter Transportation Pilot. Nearly 80 children ride the bus from the O'Brien Center every morning. Another 60 have caught a ride from the Elm Street Bus Stop. Every day, the Winter Transportation Pilot has supported around 140 students to arrive on time and ready to learn. The smooth and safe running of this program can be credited to the dedicated team of Winuski community members, parents, volunteers, high school volunteers, bus drivers, and the ongoing work of PYC staff. Bus monitors arrive every morning at 7:00 AM to Elm Street and the O'Brien Center. They sport bright yellow safety jackets over warm coats, and they greet the Winuski children as they arrive. One volunteer said that, one volunteer stays on the ground ensuring the safety of arriving students, while a second rides the bus with students to support them to meet the heart expectations. Volunteers are rewarded for their hard work with the enthusiasm and energy of young students headed to school. Students say, I like the bus. I wish there was one home as well about the program. Parents report that the bus is a huge help to them on their way to work on the mornings. The bus drivers express their admiration and gratitude to the students for their exemplary behavior. While we have, we believe the data about absenteeism and tardiness on its own will deem the program a success. We also know that the best way to experience the impact of this program is not through the numbers, but in person. PYC invites you, as school board members, to join Winuski's dedicated volunteers and students at the bus stop. One morning before the end of the program, put on a bright yellow jacket and experience firsthand the hard work of the school community and con, of the Winuski school community. And I've left my coworker's contact information as she's been contracted there. So we also have some volunteers here who would like to share a little bit about what their experience in the morning has been.
Great.
So I'm not only the volunteer, but my son also rides the bus, and he's so excited. And not only my son, other kids from my apartment. So I live like on, on the river. It's very hard for the kids from there to come to the school and in such a great traffic. So, yes, so kids are happy, we are happy. And they are on, in the school on time and with full energy. And I would like to tell you something about a lady in my, in my apartment. She's like old lady, and her daughter is like in middle school or high school somewhere, and she's like kind of challenged. But, and she was saying like, her mother was saying like this, this was a gift directly from the God, so she was so happy with this program.
Thank you.
I was so happy when I heard that. I was crying.
Thank you. Hi Valerie.
I'm Valerie, Ms. Conti. And I'm at the bus, I'm at the O'Brien Center, and I'm very grateful that they opened it for us to wait inside. And the kids like to be read to if they can, you know, read us something or do something. They engage themselves in looking at maps. Today, they had a map out, where's Africa? And it was a Vermont map, so we focused on Winuski. I said, where's Winuski? Let's find Winuski, and let's find the river, and where's the lake? And, you know, it was great. There, I would say that the kids are grateful and the parents are grateful. The parents are taking pictures of their kids getting on the bus. Their noses are pressed against the windows. They wave goodbye. The first bus waves and we're standing there waving. I mean, it is just wonderful. And I think it's a very successful program, and I'm just thrilled that I can do it, although I'm tired of getting up so early in the morning. But it's just been a joy. It really is. And you really should try it, just once. Sean did it. Rebecca did it, whole week. And wasn't it fun?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it was great. So I really suggest that you consider just coming one morning. It's 45 minutes of your time. It's not a big deal. And dress appropriately, but I'll tell you, it's great. So, thank you for letting us do this pilot, and I hope it continues.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so just a, just an email to Leslie or a line of time and.
That would be awesome.
Make sure we don't overwhelm the bus all at once.
Um.
All right. Good. I'll make sure I get one off here. Good. Any other comments? Okay. And then, so in the interest of.
Oh wait, do you have one comment?
Nope, please.
That, it also, I also appreciate the hard work that Sean and Rebecca, that you guys did to make this happen. And there was so much that goes into this, but it sounds like the students are, I hear about it, too. And so it's kind of neat to hear the excitement around this. And it's just a great, so thank you for all the work that parents, you guys do for the organization. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So we'll bring Clem and Deanna up.
Great.
Liam, if you would like to join us, please. Nothing worse than having to turn around and have everybody at the table here to help. You guys, if you want to stay, we're more than welcome to stay. All right. So again, Clem and Deanna, thank you for, for joining us again this year. We greatly appreciate the support to listen. We understand you may not necessarily be directly involved with some of these things, but you definitely have a, have a voice. And I'm sure the lunch counter and the, you know, wherever else you may bump in the hallways, there's always the opportunity to, you know, throw things in.
Definitely.
For us. So thank you again. You got much going on this year?
You know, it's normal. It'll get worse. I left, or I handed Sean, handout of all the bills that are in the House Education Committee and the Senate Education Committee. This is both last year's and this year's bills that are coming out or in those committees. I, I know Sean had sent me a list, sent us a list, and it was, it was a lot smaller than what, what we gave tonight. And so, you know, if you have any questions on any of these bills, you can get hold of the honor or I, and we'll get you answers.
Yeah, I know our, our, our interest is certainly in a very limited subset of this specific, not that we don't have a broader interest, but certainly a, a higher level of interest in a, in a very much smaller number. Sean, if you want to kick some of this?
Yeah, I think there's, there's really four big ones that I think would be good for the conversation. I thought, the first one is education funding overall and changing that system.
You had to move the date back.
Yeah. And, and, you know, that's being talked about for FY19, you know, which poses some interesting challenges, given budgets are done and estimates on tax rates and all that kind of stuff is done and published and all that kind of stuff. Second one would be special education funding, which seems to be getting a lot of attention in, in the House Ed Committee led by David Sharp. And third one would be Act 166, Preschool, in which there was a report of about eight recommendations that had come out, a joint report with Human Services and Agency of Education. And there are, that, that one seems to also be moving very fast with some significant changes to ADM, Average Daily Membership, and the funding around it, both on the, on the expense and the revenue side. And then lastly, S257, which has to do with portability of VSAC grants or scholarships for higher education. And it was recently introduced, and the, the, the simple effect would be that those grants and scholarship money would only be allowed to be used at Vermont colleges. And for, I think, 50 years or more, they have had portability and been able to use them outside of the state. So, and the other thing I would just add about all four of those is it seems from what the feedback that I'm getting through my, our organization, the Vermont Superintendent's Association, and what I'm reading in the, in the press, is things seem to be moving extraordinarily fast. And particularly those first three that I mentioned are significant, significant changes to the way that we deliver learning and education in Vermont. And so I guess at the outset, I would, I would ask our legislators and ask our board members to think about advocating to slow this down a bit, which we have asked year after year for the House and Senate Ed to slow down, be thoughtful, implement these important changes, but do it incrementally, take the time to get the relevant testimony, and move forward really thoughtfully instead of just kind of pushing stuff out there and seeing what falls out.
Yeah, I guess I have to, from an ed funding standpoint, you know, last year was an interesting starting point. I think the year before that was late, last-minute, frozen level funding. Last year was a lot of last-minute benefits. Of course, last year was a little interesting on that end. At this point, and I gotta believe I'm talking for most of the school districts, budgets are done, they're frozen, they're ready. Changes to the underlying mechanisms of, of the funding formulas that change anything radically underneath are interesting. But I think like Sean said, if this is a problem every year, then we need to fix the damn thing. Not just put a Band-Aid on the hemorrhage every year. It just seems like you get this Band-Aid every year, but we haven't found a way. I, I, you know, I gotta believe that the property tax may not necessarily be the best mechanism, but it is what we have. Predictability around that is interesting and kind of critical. But longer term, there's got to be a way to get us out of this last-minute, knee-jerk, leveraged funding pieces.
And just so, to see kind of what folks know, there's a number of different bills around education funding. And the one that has the most traction in the House, if we're looking at the pie of funding that goes into our ed fund, that the pie of homestead, residential folks, that looking at that pie as income, turning that into income base. So there's, there's lots of different money that, that goes into the ed fund. And so just thinking about that particular pie, and that if we, if we do that, that the bill that, that they're playing with right now, that is a number I can't remember, and I can flip through and see if I can find it, but it would actually have more money into the ed fund, but at a lower rate for taxpayers. So.
At a lower rate from a property tax perspective, not necessarily a state.
Yes.
Income tax.
Yes, exactly. From a property tax perspective. So there's some winners and losers on, in each of the brackets, but kind of overall, the rate would come down. So.
Property tax rate would come down.
Property tax rate would come down for those folks. So even though that, that start date is early in terms of, of what you all are talking about, of budgets being done and all this, but what it does mean is that if that particular plan is able to go through, that means there won't be the statewide property tax increase that we're projected to see because of all the things that happened last year. So just wanting to say in terms of budgets are done, and if this is something that can go through, it would still provide the funds for the schools that, and fulfill the budget needs while not having the property tax hike across the board that is currently going to happen without some, some intervention on the, the ed funding.
I mean, generally speaking, it would, it appears to me that it would, it would work just fine for Winuski. One of the things I have a question about is it hinges a lot on that sales and use tax, which they're talking about 100% of that coming into the ed fund, and it, which is a difference of 260 million. And I just, I haven't seen anything that, that shows that that's a good number. Because it's kind of like putting the, a lot of the eggs in one basket.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what that, what assumptions that's built on.
Well, and part of the assumptions that it's built on is the consistency of that tax. And then that tax has been very consistent. And so with having a tax, all of that tax going in, and, and the history of it being very consistent, then can help school budgets because then we can know that, we can project that consistency will continue. So that's part of the thinking from the Ed Committee.
Yep. So where's, how do you backfill the 260 million dollars from the sales and use tax for where its current purpose is?
That is beyond.
Going to come out of the left pocket?
Well, and that.
We've only got a certain amount of dollars here, right? We're, I mean, if it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, it's going to come out somewhere else.
And so there's, when we look at the budget overall, there's a lot of different moving pieces. And as we know, and also as we know that the governor has very clearly come out and said no new fees or no new taxes, yet it is proposing a lot of new programs. And so really moving money around in all, in all these places. So that, I'm trying to recall the specific. So that, I'm trying to recall the specific response that the Ed Committee gave for that of what, where that money specifically, you know, how is it balancing out? And I honestly don't remember the answer to that question, but I do remember that it was something that I felt fine about.
From an ed funding perspective, as long as there's a consistent background and we don't have to throw from a state level 50, 60 million dollars in every year, you know, there's, you don't have that last minute chase, that would certainly help.
Yep.
But again, it certainly seems like, from the outside looking in, I don't know, but it has to come from somewhere.
Yeah, and I was very impressed with the stability of the numbers that they showed when they were talking about the policy and impressed with how able, they're able to raise the amount of money that we need without having such the big property tax rate hike that we'd be looking at if we don't do anything.
I mean, it does draw a line in the sand with really high spending districts, because they're the ones that are going to be challenged financially the most in this proposal.
And I think also for Winuski, where the bill is in a good position because it takes into account the fiscal conservatism that Winuski has been doing. And so, as opposed to two years ago, when we had all of this, the formula would have really hurt us for our fiscal responsibility, this new bill really rewards us for being fiscally responsible and gives us the space to grow with students as we need.
The bill is that?
You know, I think, you know what it is? Is that there's not a bill because it's a committee bill.
Right.
And so, it's, and so, for those of you that don't know, a committee bill is something that as a committee, they decide to work on. And so, until it is voted out, there's not a bill number in the same way that if an individual legislator had a bill go through. So what's hard is that the only way to get it is to kind of go through their website. But I don't know, Sean, how familiar are you with that? And if you like...
Well, it's in-house and ways and means, I believe. And then it's also being supported by the Joint Fiscal Office is doing, running the numbers for them.
Yep.
So then it would have to come out of there and in the form of a bill. And then I would imagine also have the blessing of the Ed Committees.
Yes, definitely, yeah. So if you, if you're facile with those things and want to share it with the rest of folks, and if you can't find it for some reason, if you can let Clem and I know, and then we can pull it up and share it with you all.
Yeah, well, that's part, and generally speaking, that's part of what I have found challenging is that, like what I have related to that is January 30th.
Yep.
And when I kind of ask or I look, you know, things seem to be moving fast from what I'm hearing and is being related, but I don't see the documentation to kind of back up what's happening anywhere. And so, it's kind of hard to follow. And it's worrisome that we have these huge, significant things like pre-K, special ed, and the overall funding system, and they all seem to be moving rapidly.
Have you, have they invited either one of you folks to come down to speak to the Ed Committee this year?
No.
Do you want to come down and express your concerns?
I wrote some emails to Senators Baruth and Lyons this morning about, mostly about pre-K at this point, because I had heard early this morning that that was moving like a freight train, and they needed to hear from us. And about the portability of the VSAC grants.
If you decide you want to come down and speak to the House Ed, we'll arrange that.
Yeah.
And Mike, referring to your statement about, you know, where budgets are done, we understand that.
Yeah.
But the way the system works up there, they're looking at everything, and a budget is not, a total budget is not decided until the last week. Normally, the last couple of hours of the legislative session on a Friday or Saturday night.
Right, in May.
At 11 o'clock.
And a half after we're done.
Yeah. We understand that, and we convey that down there, but it's just the make of the animal.
Right. The issue for me on that ends up not necessarily being the changes that are made, but it's the comments we make along the way to the interested folks in town about the taxes, about the impact of our school budget on their taxes.
Right.
Everybody wants to know what the bottom line is. It's always an estimate, we understand that. But there are some levers that can be pulled at the last minute that can make big swings in that number. And that is, it's hard to explain, it's hard to describe, even though you say this is only an estimate along the way, significant swings are tough. Now, going back to the sales and use tax, if that is as stable as you say it is through time, at least you've got a base to fund that is a little more predictable on the incoming piece.
And if we're able to shift to income tax base, then we're also not having to deal with the grand list shifts that occur. And so, those shifts in the grand list really have, can have a big impact on folks and on communities, as you know. And so, moving to income and in terms of clarity for individuals, it's a lot easier for me to say, oh, my income has gone up such and such dollars, I expect that my taxes will go up such and such percentage or something. But in terms of, oh, the grand list? What's the grand list? How did that over there go up and this went down and that affects me how?
Right.
So that's also part of the interest in moving to the income tax to reduce, particularly at the local level, some of the challenges that you all have to explain the very complex system. But the most equitable, besides Hawaii, we have the most equitable funding system of any state, but it's a very complex one.
Right. Yep. Okay.
It does, what I like about it, though, from what I've seen, is that it does simplify.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it takes some of the elements that are involved in the formula right now, it takes them right out.
And taking into account the per pupil spending of, you know, fiscally, I'll call it fiscally responsible.
Yeah.
You can pass practices.
Mm-hmm.
And taking that into account is, you know, a big deal.
Yeah.
I think there's a, there has been for a number of years and continues to be and could be this year if the system switches, a risk of public trust in that, you know, we're going to be standing up right in front of people in the community and saying, this is what we estimate, this is what we built it on. And they may be hearing in the press that we're going to an income-based system, and it's different, which causes confusion, which causes suspicion, which causes the possibility of an erosion of public trust. And I think we have to all be aware of that as we're moving forward.
Just a comment, just, I'd be curious to see how that shows up for folks who rent. And just like, you know, as a millennial who rents in Chittenden County, very often I hear the narrative that like, my taxes are high, quid pro quo, your rent is high. And if that model changes, it'll just be interesting to see like the long-term effect on it. It'll be, you know, I'd be like, well, my rent should be pretty stable. Ideally, right, that would be the hope. So it'll just be interesting to see messaging around that.
Well, and I'm forgetting the exact number, but it's something like 80 or 90% of renters make below the, let's see, so many numbers.
Eighty-six percent make under 47,000.
Yeah, make under 47,000, $7,000. So they would not be putting into the income tax for the schools. So it wouldn't, for, yeah, 88%, it shouldn't be impacting them, and then it shouldn't affect their rent at all.
And the 47 is the adjusted gross income.
That's really interesting.
All right, good. Then special ed is an interesting one as you get into, I mean, it took me probably four years of budgets to try to figure out what the moving parts meant. When you increase your special ed section or section of the budget, 650,000 in a year, but you have to plan, you take that into account on the spending side, it looks like a big number.
Mm-hmm.
And then you turn around and you look at the reimbursement piece of it on the revenue end of it, and it didn't, it still made a big difference, but there's a lot of reimbursement that happens in those services as well. And we are, I've got to believe, pretty high on the end of both the spending and the reimbursement per capita. I don't know if there's any kind of metrics on that, but having a significant movement in that formula is definitely an impact to the budget and our spending, so.
Yeah, this one would hurt, this one would hurt us pretty bad, because we have a higher rate of students with disabilities than most communities, where over 20%. And many of those are in the pretty intensive range. So we don't have a lot of kids with just a specific learning disability around reading or math, but, you know, pretty significant disability or disabilities. And so, those tend to be pretty expensive. And so, going to a block grant in the census model doesn't necessarily, it does have, does take into account, from what I understand, around some extraordinary expenses, but it's kind of a block grant per ADM. So you're getting an amount of money based on the number of students that you have in the school overall.
Rather than the situation, the specific situation.
Rather than the individual situation of each student with a disability and what they need. And I think for us, that could pose a serious financial challenge.
Which, when you look at averages, it's interesting and it works in the math, but when you look at the distributions around those, that's where we end up, you know, needing to take a deeper look at that, because that would be a significant impact, could be a significant impact depending on the changes.
And I think for us, as an organization and a community, that would be the one of the four that we've talked about that I would suggest needs to slow down the most, because it is really complex.
And how, how easy or difficult is it for you all to get the special ed instructors that you need?
We've done pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say that we've never been in a position necessarily where we can't fill a position. I would say that sometimes the pools are not as deep as we would like to see them. Some of the most challenging positions to find are special educators who work with students who have emotional behavioral disabilities, because it's really taxing work. And you're not just working with kids, you're working with families and systems. So those positions are sometimes difficult. But I think overall, we've been, done pretty well in that area.
Great.
We have a pretty strong director there, so I think the program has a good reputation that we've been able to build for care. And Robin does, she's been at it quite a while, she does a pretty, pretty good job, a really good job. So it...
I think one of the biggest challenges in special ed is the capacity outside of schools to collaborate and/or support students that school systems cannot support well. And there's not a lot of choices for that, and the choices that we have are really expensive.
These are out placements?
Yeah.
If you have to get to that point of out placements, yeah. That's the one thing that I think that has surprised me the most is, you know, it's the, in our conversations, has been that when you do have to get to the point where doing an outplacement is the right thing for the student and the school, when you have an extremely limited supply of spaces for kids to go, the charges can become quite steep. And if that, if there were more space to place, there, I think the cost could be contained a little bit more. It's not something that you're going to find popping up on every street corner, because it's not a, not a simple thing to handle. And so, it's a very specialized space, but to create more capacity...
And so, just so that I'm clear, in the outpatient, in the outplacement, it's like the center point in high school, kind of?
Right.
Could be, yeah. And there's different, you know, there's day placements, there's residential, there's, yeah.
Right.
But the Baird School, there's, but there's just, there's not a lot of places and, and some of them are far away and transportation costs are pretty crazy. Yep.
What is the status with statewide negotiation for teacher health benefits this year?
There has not been talk about that this year. So I think the drama that happened at the end of last session kind of killed that. And that there has been, just kind of as there many years are, convers, little murmurings of, well, what if we had regional contracts, or what if we had, you know, something? But there hasn't, there hasn't been movement on those.
Contracts are all done, issues gone, quiet, quieter.
Yep.
I still believe we need a statewide teachers' contract with two or three or four different pace scales for different parts of the state. And get it out of the local school board hand, because I know when I was here, how much time you guys spent on negotiations and budgets.
You know, I have a bit of mixed emotions on that one, in that you're going to get differences from community to community or school to school in working conditions and issues concerned with that. I think we've been able to handle them well. I mean, we've turned a couple of issues back to both teachers and the principals to say what makes sense. And it was, it was done well and turned back around to us, where I would, I don't know, looking back from the teachers, hard for me to put myself on the other side of the table, but if you have somebody outside of your district making, making choices on those issues, I'm not convinced that may be 100% the right thing. I may kick myself for saying this, but saying, having said that, looking at the health benefits piece of it and the impact of the benefits alone on the budgets, and is there any real difference between a teacher in Newport, a teacher in Bennington, a teacher in St. Albans with respect to health benefits? Pay maybe, working conditions maybe, but benefits, they're out of control everywhere. But is that a particular piece that can have a statewide budget, a statewide negotiated benefit statement for all teachers alone and leave the other pieces where they are? Salaries dependent on the community's ability to pay, but having, I don't know if the pool all being together, they already are at the state level, right? So the money is interesting, but at least from a predictability standpoint, having just the benefits negotiated statewide, seems like it would make a whole lot of sense, just because, again, a teacher in Rutland or a teacher in Newport, benefits-wise, what is the difference?
And I can't tell you the exact difference, but I can tell you that it's an important piece of the puzzle. And I...
Of the negotiating puzzle.
Of the negotiating puzzle. And I absolutely think that we should pull healthcare out of this death spiral that it's in, and that part of that of what are some options for the whole state of, we've made a little bit of movement on primary, universal healthcare, that would be huge if teachers had primary healthcare. And then, you know, there could be supplemental insurance and different things, but I'm, the cost of that, just pulling it off your backs would be huge.
The discussion about our overall state of our healthcare system, I wouldn't even want to take on on here, but, but in general, knowing what we have today and what we are confronted with today, you know, it just, it just seems to me that that particular piece would stabilize at least that piece from a state funding perspective.
It does look like there's two, still two House bills, at least on the list, related to that.
Probably hang orders from last year.
What are the numbers, Sean?
409, which really, it says teachers' healthcare premium, so it's not everybody in schools. And then 858, which sounds like it's more about a process for statewide negotiation of healthcare, and that's for all school employees.
So that one will, that one will do what it is, but that was for what it's worth. The Act 66, the pre-K? 166? The pre-K is...
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say about that for us specifically, and this is what I wrote to Senators Baruth and Lyons this morning, was, you know, we made the decision four or five years ago to open up a second classroom and to go to four half-day programs so we could serve as many students as possible, because we, when we did some data collection, we realized that we were around a quarter of kids that were eligible for preschool were actually in programs. And we're up into the... And we're up into the sixty, seventy percent, which fits with the national averages now. So because of what I'm hearing about the ADM and, and how they want to change the, the funding mechanism for that, we would probably be forced to go back, go to, split that in half and go full-day programs. Because we just wouldn't be able to support it financially. So to me, that would just be a huge step backwards. You know, we're continuing to try and build, um, both childcare and pre-K capacity in other places because we don't have space here to expand, um, right now. But in the short term, if that was to go through and the way that I'm hearing it's proposed, it could be pretty, pretty hard for our community.
Definitely need the social interaction early from a lot of our-
Yeah, well, and it's not like those, the, you know, the fifty percent of the kids that we couldn't take that, you know, they're just gonna go find other programs. Because there's not other options in Winuski and then you run into all of those barriers that, um, affect, um, low-income families like transportation and so.
As you can tell from the wellness presentation earlier, take care of them while they're here. But taking care of them earlier is, is key, getting them in and up to speed, so. All right, anything else on the pre-K piece? So, go ahead.
Portability.
Portability, um, I mean, I also kind of just curious of where this, where we stand, or where the school district stands. Because I have my own personal opinions that like, I actually do prefer that the VSEC stay in-state, but I don't know, um, what drove this bill all of a sudden.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, it's been something that people have talked about for a number of years. Um, and then there's a big push by the governor, uh, to fund college tuition for guard members. Um, so the adjutant general is pushing that really hard and, um, and the governor has, um, has picked up on that and is pushing that really hard. And so, um, the, the move around the portability, um, was taking some of the money, I think it was one point five, something like that, um, from the, the five million that is currently taken out of state and given to the, um, the guard college tuition program. So that's, that's how this came up, um, and what the money is being used for. So it doesn't eliminate it all the way, um, is my understanding. So it is one of those things that I could have some things wrong or things could have moved since I last, uh, talked to somebody about it. But that, um, that's my understanding of, of what has happened.
We're losing a lot of guard talent, uh, if we don't get, start funding some education for, for these guard members. Because they can go to other states and get more than what, what they're gonna probably get in Vermont. Uh, and a lot of them have said they want to stay in Vermont, but they need some help.
So is there part-time guards, full-time jobs elsewhere for education money to help them?
So the states, the states around us, um, offer free tuition, um, for guard members. And, um, Vermont offers, um, a grant scholarship that's from a pool. And so if you're going to CCV State College, uh, you get two thousand dollars per semester. And if you're going to UVM Private College or, um, uh, UVM, uh, you get three thousand dollars per semester. Um, however, um, uh, yeah, so Sean, you have an idea of kind of what that, what that would mean and cut into? Um, and so what that, and, and for one year of, of, um, school, it's two years of service. And, um, so, uh, the numbers that they want is they want two hundred and seven students to be, two hundred and seven guard members to be enrolled in the program. That's what the states around us do, uh, and that would be to get our total guard numbers up. Um, to the, it's like thirteen hundred, um, guard members that we have as potential size of our, of our unit. And right now there are seventy-four students who are enrolled in that program, in the current program. So, um, uh, so that's, that's where the portability issue is coming from, is the governor's request to, uh, increase funding for a guard scholarship and to turn it into an entitlement, which, um, unfortunately, uh, in the current program, it's a potential liability of three point five million, um, which is, um, up from the six hundred thousand that we're currently spending on this grant-based program. So it's a, um, it's a huge jump from what we're currently spending to what the potential liability could be. Um, and, uh, but that, that's where this portability issue has come from is in trying to fund that. Again, with no new taxes, no new fees, what, what gets lost? And, um, what's getting lost is that, uh, low-income students' opportunity to spend money elsewhere so that low-income students will instead join the National Guard.
Glad to ask.
I'm Liam Danner, uh, work at VSEC for the gear-up program, also a UVM student. I think we've crossed paths o- over there, uh, with one another and a lifetime Vermonter. So I definitely can be empathetic to the, the plight also at play of people my age leaving and not settling here and this being part of that discussion. I think, uh, where, where VSEC comes down on it is that this will hit low-income and moderate-income students harder and in a way that it won't touch middle and middle-upper kids, you know, and it will take, you know, there's seven thousand title for schools across the country. Um, and so students can affor, who can afford to go to those schools will get to go to those schools. And students who rely on grant funding will be forced to either rely on plus loans, private loans to fill that gap or they just really won't get to go anymore. So kids who are going to private schools in New York or Massachusetts or, you know, for, for a whole host of reasons. Um, a lot of the New England tuition, um, remission, I can't think of the acronym because higher ed, but there's like through, over three hundred and thirty programs that we don't offer in, in Vermont presently. HVAC technicians, cybersecurity, healthcare IT, and it's saying no to those jobs for, for students who rely on this money. And it's really just taking opportunities away from the neediest people. Just that for Chittingen County specs, I mean, there's two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five college kids out of Chittingen County and twenty-four percent of them are getting money in low, but low to middle-low incomes, which are getting money and taking that out of state. So we're talking about a really small group of students taking about a million dollars out. And this would just pull that directly from, from their experience. And really what that would do is it would say, if you can afford to go elsewhere, you can go elsewhere. If you can't, you better, you gotta pick a place right around here. And just from an aspirations perspective and from an achievement perspective, it just feels like that's balancing this on students who really shouldn't be put in that position, I think, from an equity issue. It's a huge equity issue from where we stand. Um, and just an interesting little fact, I mean, students who do go to privates out, or students who do go to school out of state are bar, already borrowing thirteen thousand five hundred dollars on average more, you know, than they would here. So, you know, there's, there's loan borrowing limits that people run into. And so if you don't have access to credit or you don't have access to loans, you're gonna be forced to either just not go or you're gonna be forced to tap into your community. I mean, uh, a big, my big role here is I do financial aid with students. You know, I've, I'm filling out FAFAs every single day with kids and I am helping them piece together the, the loans and the grants and the scholarships. And when an eighth grader or tenth grader says, "I really want to go to MIT," I'm, what do, what are we saying? No, you don't get to go to MIT, you get to go to a school in your, in your state and that's it. Where if they have the income, they do kind of get to look elsewhere, so. That's sort of where we're at, that's where I'm at, I guess. Um, you know, it's obviously a super complex funding piece, but it definitely is gonna impact students without those resources.
I'm assuming you didn't just show up tonight out of luck, right?
No, no, I'm also Winuski resident, you know, and a voter and a lifetime Vermonter and, you know, I work at VSEC, so I have a lot invested in this, but, yeah.
Those students who leave the state come back to work at all?
Oh, I would think we don't have that, it'd be interesting to see though.
I heard that two years ago, there was a study of recent grads, so two years out. Um, and it was thirty percent of students, uh, had come back within that two-year, at that two-year mark. Um, so, um, we don't know at-
Five.
At five and, um, and it's just, it was a one-time study to assess and see that. So we don't have any other data on, on what that is. Yep.
It's fascinating too, a lot of the literature around low-income students and first-generation college students suggests that they want to come back deeply and badly. So like the, the, the brain drain is, it doesn't affect that population in the same way that it affects students, shockingly, of upward social and economic mobility, right? They wanna, they wanna go explore Boston, they wanna go explore Manhattan, they wanna go explore big urban city centers. I mean, as a Vermonter, totally anecdotally, but I think largely it's not a higher ed piece. It's a, it's a, it's a city center or urban economic piece that students aren't, we don't have seventeen cities for students to choose from at twenty-five years old. It's Chittingen County largely, you know, for, at least for my contemporaries. So I mean, it's a, it's a good point, I'm just-
I see other sta, you know, we have a very unique model in terms of VSEC, in terms of how we give out loans and all their, and if, one of our goals is to keep talent in the state, it seems odd that we send them out and then only thirty percent come in. And, and then the question is, where's the investment and payback on our dollars? Whereas like I can see coast guards, we keep them in-state, they bring, keep their money in here, the economics dollars. Now, I get it's an access issue and it's affordability and stuff, but, um, you know, from a higher ed perspective, I keep on hearing Vermont has one of the most, you know, highly density, you know, density of higher ed schools in the, in the states, right? And so there must be a lot of great programs that make it affordable and stuff. And then, then, you know, the cost of some of the, our great state schools keeps them here. They can go elsewhere, they keep the debt low, you know, we keep some of the money, the investment comes in, you know. I just see it as that pipeline, so I'm kind of, you know, from my perspective, I'm going like, okay, so thirty percent, is that a high enough talent rate to come back in for someone who's paying all these taxes to watch my students go somewhere else? So another state benefits.
Is the assumption that they're leaving because, they're not coming back because they didn't get to go to college here? Or the assumption that they're not coming back because there are jobs here for them? I'm just, I mean, I, I, to your point, I agree.
No, and I get that.
I think it's largely a factor of, of that too, it's not just that they didn't go to UVM.
And I also think that from the state, our, you know, working on a university, I've looked at the numbers too in terms of how many out-of-staters at UVM stay in-state, that covers the loss of the in-state who go to UVM and stay. I've looked at those economic dollars. And I also totally understand that it's an economic thing. And so, and, and there's part of, um, for me, it's an understanding like, how do we promote the economics of the state and the talent that's in the state to bring in the jobs? You know, it's a, but that, that's not this House Committee bill, right? Like, that's not, and I don't, we could go on and those type of discussions. The key is, is on this level of like, you know, okay, so affordability and accessibility on this level, why do we spend so much money and if the return is thirty percent? Who's making those decisions on, on terms of the data that says like, is that a good enough return on our investment?
Well, I'd be interested in another data point related to that would be of the kids who graduate from high school in Vermont and go to Vermont colleges, how many of them are staying for, you know, more than two or three years of employment? Or, or directly going into employment in Vermont? And/or going maybe somewhere else for years and then returning, you know, and-
And I have for the direct out of UVM, I know those numbers and those have been shared in the state legislative reports by the president of the UVM, you know, at that point, because we've been tracking some of those numbers to show the service of the state. Um, but like, once again, it's one of those odd pieces and that's why I was kind of curious. Like, I want to hear why, like, what's the counterpoint to why I shouldn't feel this way?
Yeah.
And that's why I'm trying to be open-minded on that.
Yeah.
Because it was one of the first things that was really odd to me when I came into this state going like, oh, no wonder other colleges are poaching all of our students.
I think it's really interesting just to that point, you know, we, we import per capita the second most number of out-of-state students in the nation. Uh, you know, we're bringing in twenty-five thousand students a year to our colleges here and only sending out about four. So just from like a, physically is there space, right? We have a, a flagship university that has ten thousand students, incoming classes of twenty-five hundred a year. We have a state college system largely VTC, CCV, uh, Northern Vermont University and Caston University. And just as far as like seats, seats available, programming available, how many dental hygiene seats are there realistically in the state? There aren't that many, nursing is, you know, there's just not that many seats. So from an aspiration perspective and, and kids do aspire for these things and if they don't have access, I mean, I, I obviously understand your point, like, we don't just want to watch this money evaporate into the air, but we also don't want to tell students from high-needs schools, the ten highest-need schools, that like, yes, it would be great if your parents had the resources to offset this, but you don't necessarily, the way that opportunity get presents in high-needs populations, we just were afraid that it's gonna be really disproportionate in a place like here, you know, or in a, you know, in a place where there is higher need. What a student, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna be getting ready to do this here.
Yeah, it's my junior year, so I am starting to think about it, like, oh, college, like another year and a half. But, yeah, I've been looking at in college, out of state, I mean, in-state and out-of-state and, you know, weighing the tuition price. And I, I don't want that to like determine if I go to this college or this college. Because I, I don't know what major I want to go in yet either, so it's kind of like interesting to look at what I can discover. And I know I've been talking to my friends, a lot of people think I can only afford in-state. And it's like, I want to stay home, I'm gonna stay close to home because I don't want to spend, what is it, like, eight thousand dollars for room and board and food that, you know. That's kind of where a lot of, I feel, I, I want to like look at urban areas. I've been like, oh, Boston's pretty cool, I haven't been to Boston before. Like, oh, they've got like more tech over there, like, well, not really, I know UVM's a really good school. You've got a bunch of good schools around here, but I don't know. It's just like, I know a lot of, from what I'm hearing with my like junior friends and stuff, a lot of us feel like we have to be in-state because that's what we can afford, if that makes sense, yeah.
Because I live in, file up the access piece, I think the messaging around, yeah, college being incredibly expensive is, is already, like, it permeates through every level. When I, when I ask seventh graders, what do you know about college, it's expensive. That's the first thing that they know and the student loan debt crisis is obviously like at a national level. And our fear is that this will, for folks who want to go out of state, they will fill that gap, that this grant program fills with loans. And anyone here, parent loans or plus loans for their children, you know what the interest rates on those loans look like and another two thousand dollars a year over four years is eight thousand dollars or a six-year graduation track. So we're talking a lot of money for families to put up. And it's sort of, whoever used Peter DePaul, I can't remember who mentioned that earlier, but I've always loved that. It's sort of like taking it here and putting it over here, so.
I'll post your child for parent plus. Had five kids, two of them out of, three of them out of state, two in-state, one still in school. All four that completed left the state, no opportunity. Better opportunities elsewhere. Staying home wasn't an option. It wasn't the fact that I told them the rent would be prohibitive at my house, they saw opportunity elsewhere. I am, I, I am very passionate about this discussion. If, if we're gonna have a Vermont Student Assistance Corps, we're gonna help students. And helping students just to go to Vermont schools is, i- if that's our mission, then we change the name to Vermont Schools Assistance Corp, we don't even change the acronym, but we're not helping students. We're helping Vermont schools. And I, uh, we need to help the students with the most need. Those that are in the upper end are probably not gonna get a lot of help from VSEC just because of the way the funding is set up and that's fair. But from an opportunity standpoint, if it doesn't exist here for the ability for our kids to, to utilize it, they need to, to go elsewhere. And I hope I can work another twenty-five years to pay off what I've got, not said, but.
I'm in a similar position for me, I mean, I want, I want Destiny and I want my own kids, I want all of Vermont kids to be able to have a choice and to have options and not have built-in barriers. And in particular, not low-income families who already have a lot of barriers in place. And I also kind of make the connection back to Act seventy-seven and multiple, you know, flexible pathways. And, you know, we're, we're building a public education system that really is saying, you can do anything. You can go anywhere and we want to support you in that because we want to start with you as the student and build from there. And if we're at the same time creating systemic, uh, barriers to that, it doesn't jive for me.
You had a totally, just last year doing award, so you do, you do the financial aid season and then you do the award letter season with students? And I do see that, I had that trouble last year where students who they have this messaging in their head, I can go anywhere, but there are loan borrowing limits and then if your parents can't access capital, there are just gaps that are there. And if it's a twenty thousand dollar gap with a stu, like, I think I applied to, there's one student, we applied to twenty colleges together, you know, twenty apps before he came around and was like, I can't, I don't have a way to fill this gap. And no, the grant's not gonna fill this gap, but for many students, it is gonna, it is the difference on the loan limits. You know, it's what their keep, their family can leverage, it's where, it's as much as they can do, so, just to your point.
I, I think a lot of it comes down, if we want to keep the kids here after college, regardless of where they go, they have to have the opportunity to seek employment that does what they want to do across a variety of, of occupations. Uh, if we don't have that, they're not coming back.
And so again, right now, it's a switch out for portability for low-income students to tuition for National Guard members, which are also low-income students. Um, so just if, I'm hearing a lot of passion in this room about portability and so that is the trade-off that's happening right now, so. Um, so just if, I'm hearing a lot of passion in this room about portability and so that is the trade-off that's happening right now, so.
It's for different portability, it's trying to keep coast guards here.
And and.
Dressing a different population and trying to, you know, and I get the, I mean, I think we all can agree at some point that the issue is really is that there are no jobs here and we need to have a better strategy on.
The passion that we all have, you know, and we can disagree, and I think we're going to all disagree on this thing, but the real issue is, is that there are no jobs. And and I think we've, we as a state should be leveraging the fact that we have one of, and and I've come to starting to believe that we have a jewel of education here. K through twelve, higher ed. Now, most states would have leveraged this into bringing more economy and companies into the state, but what are we doing as a state on a strategy standpoint at that level? Um, and that's, I think, the thing that like I I would love, and so instead of spending our time, energy wasting on like the philosophical difference of the portability. The real issue is, is how do we think about the economy and how do we leverage this great school system that we have built in Vermont? And that's something that, I think that's where, I know Sean and Mike have probably heard me say this way too much, it's one of the things that like, I'm probably the most passionate about is at that level. Like, you know, I sit down and go like, I just don't get it. Like, you know, when when schools are the largest employers of the state, that's great, but it's a sign of something that is completely wrong.
And I think I'm going to, I'm not going to cut you off, but I want to move on on the, and I think leaving it right there is is a good place to leave it. Because I think we circled, came back to the beginning, um, I think everybody had their say, anybody had a last, uh, Clem, Deanna, had, you know, very much appreciate you taking your time.
Especially on Valentine's Day.
Clem, right? I won't, I won't even go into what I took coming in here tonight, but that's, that's okay, so, thank you.
Phone call away, we'll get answers or get get you connected to the right people.
Yep.
Bashful, we're not.
That I know.
We can't. Bring the students down next week.
Yeah, and there's some students coming on Friday.
Yes.
Thank you for hosting, that helps.
Yeah, it's always a treat.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you again, safe trip, climb, get down Montpelier in the dark, autopilot by now, right? Liam, thanks for all the work you do here, we appreciate it. Hope that golden apple is still polished.
Oh, it is.
Prominently displayed for your peers. Yeah, just, yes, they they have a bar, they have a bar to reach.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, so with that, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda and the additional piece here was just one change Sean wanted to note. So we'll let everybody see that. Is there any other, uh, items in that consent agenda to? Comment on, okay, and Sean?
So you're probably going to be angry for me even wasting the paper, but we need numbers to be correct. So in the agenda packet on that, um, uh, accounts payable payroll cover sheet, down under accounts payable, on the right-hand side, it says thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two and thirty-eight cents for February. We had a voided check for fifty-two dollars and ten cents, so the correct number is thirty-three, seven hundred and twenty-eight cents. So I would ask that you accept the change that we would put into the consent, uh, replace that cover sheet in the consent agenda upon your approval.
All right.
And it's solid attention to detail right there, sir.
Where do you want, where do I put this in that, do I put it under consent agenda or do I put it under, under discussion?
Um, consent.
No, it'd be under consent, right.
Put it right in consent, there's a correction.
Yep, and I would accept a motion to accept a consent agenda as just amended.
Same.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Just the parking lot agreement? I know we we kind of have tended to rubber stamp that, I know we're going through some parking issues. Um, are we, I mean, it's it's a limited amount of spaces and are we still, we don't see enough, we don't see any abuse.
I think next year we need to talk about it.
Okay, all right, that's fair. All right, so, um, all those in favor accepting a consent agenda as amended, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So next year, this will come up again in February, do we discuss it in January?
Uh, we could bring it up even earlier than that.
We'd talk about it a little bit in advance.
It would be important to give notice even earlier than we have normally been scheduled.
Okay, all right, so we'll have to put that into the annual agenda so we remember, uh, to touch it. Okay, uh, and then the other, um, big item that we, um, touch on annually is the audit report. And had the opportunity to talk to, um, the auditors last Thursday morning and with Rebecca and Sean and and, uh, two, two of the auditors. And, uh, I think the summary I took out of that in general, solid. Things are aligned to, you know, the budget and the budget adjustments that we make. And the spending that's accounted for after the fact, the accounting print, the accounting practices are all aligned. So in general, it was a, it was a very good report. And so without touching necessarily into the the other piece of it, I mean, did any other, there was a one material weakness noted and I'll I'll get to that in a minute. But other than that, Sean, Rebecca, any comments from a high level?
No, I mean, I think, you know, we ran tight, we carried over about twenty-four thousand dollars, that's the tightest we've ever been in a really long time. So it's just showing that when we're budgeting, we're really, we really need everything we're asking for. And it can be, um, quite a task to try to keep those numbers even throughout the year. So it's always nice when you come up in the black and not the red.
So, you know, I always ask them when we get done. Given what you've, given what you've seen as you've done, gone through this audit and that you've been through other schools. What can you give us for advice on things that you've seen that we can do better? Last year, there was, there was nothing, it was, you guys seemed to have, um, you know, one of the top-end practices, accounting principles, fiscal responsibility and accounting. This year, um, outside of this material weakness here that we'll talk about in a second, then things were about the same. There's really not a lot, pay attention to this particular issue, we'll talk more deeply on in a second. So I I was happy with the outcome, are they still doing a good job? I mean, they they seem to be doing.
I mean.
In-depth.
They they're here for three days, they're, they're very accessible, we talk, you know, they're very transparent, we do have a lot of discussion, they're a good resource. You know, they're very timely this year, the audit came to you a little bit late because we had a few other things going on this fall. So we hope to get back into a better schedule next fall. It took a little longer to complete some things because we were trying to do some other stuff. But it's, it's a great experience, they're great to work with, very professional and, um, you know, they come and they, most of it we do over, um, email. I send them a lot of stuff, so when they get here, you know, they may ask, we go through and ask some questions and more information, but it's, it's a good process and it's not invasive. It's, I don't feel like I'm at their, I need to sit with them for three days, which is really helpful too. But it's, it's a good process and they're good, I learn a lot from them every year.
And then one of the things that I was very early on, um, highlighted too is that in these auditor reports, um, we've had one session on how to deal with these things. And it's always like a bazillion numbers, like, how can you end up with negative interest income, income expense, but I I got that.
We covered that, okay.
We covered, we covered that one. It's a long story if you really want to know, but it makes, I guess, sense in the long run. But one of the things I was always warned about is be careful of a material weakness, because that is now highlighting something that was done that was counter to what we would have expected. So I wanted to read the, the, what I had, what I think sets the boundary of what we're talking about here and then get a little deeper into what happened. But I'd rather read right from here first and then have a discussion based on it. I'm down on, uh, section six executive limitations way down into page, it it's actually the second or third page ten. I think it's a couple pages off the bottom of the report, so if you get all the way to the bottom and look for page ten, I'm in, what's listed here is section B and that material witness, witness, material weakness is, uh, identified. And I think this kind of gets to the heart. It is, um, under preschool development expansion grant, that'll be key in our discussion here in just a second. It says, uh, condition of the criteria, it says, under the grant, which was signed in December two thousand sixteen, expenses were reimbursed to a contractor before there was a contract in place with that contractor. State of Vermont is aware of this issue. Cause, procedures were not followed as there was a rush to get the grant through and the contractor paid as the first year of new, as the first year of new federal program. There was confusion about the implementation and who was ultimately responsible for the grant. The effect, the grant was signed in December sixteen to cover August one sixteen, uh, through December, through June thirty of seventeen. The contract for the grant was signed in March of seventeen, but expenses were reimbursed covering the entire period of the grant. So expenses were reimbursed during a time where there was no contract in place. And I think that is, becomes the key component. Of the total grant expenses, expenses, seventy thousand, six forty-one were reimbursed before the grant or contract, uh, were signed. And ninety-two thousand, one dollar were reimbursed after the contract was beso- designed, but before the grant was signed. These monies are subject to disallowance and refund and refund, uh, to the state of Vermont as questioned cost. Questioned cost, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six forty-two, the sum of those two that I just mentioned. Recommendation, any new grant or funding source should be thoroughly reviewed and any contracts under the grant should be put in place before any expenditures take place. First, what was, what was spent was in accordance ultimately with what the grant had in it. We we didn't spend more than what was in the grant, we didn't spend it any different than what was in the grant. It was the, the, and we'll get to the 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 deeper details in a second, but I think that the key component for me was what was ultimately spent was in accordance with the grant. What was, um, done with the monies was what was supposed to have been done with the monies. The issue here was the timing of both the implementation of the original grant and, uh, the timing of of the contract, uh, with this supplier. So with that, I don't know who exactly I wanted to cover this one earlier, but one of the key pieces to me, if you can can elaborate on it, was our discussion about the initiation, the first pass of the of the grant. And and the timing of the, grant monies are available, this is what they're for, get them in place from the state. Can you, can you kind of time that out?
This was all part of a kind of broader, um, flooding of the pre, pre-case system with supporting dollars. And so these federal monies came quickly and, uh, there was a lot of pressure, not only from the Agency of Education, but also from, uh, lobbies like Let's Grow Kids and, um, Permanent Fund and so forth, you know, like, we have the opportunity, there's all this money, let's do it, you know, and and we are, um, um, we're a perfect place that can take advantage of those dollars. So we wanted to make it work. We have a, uh, an organization in town, the Winuski Family Center, that we have a great relationship with. And, um, so we thought even in this compressed timeline with all the other pressures going on and everything and, um, some reticence from Rebecca about to do it. That, uh, Robin, uh, Director of Early Learning and myself and working with the family center, um, and, uh, we felt like this is an opportunity to get, uh, a higher level of service to some of the neediest students in our community and increase the preschool capacity. So what we missed in the, um, the language of the grant was that it needed to be, um, there, there needed to, we, we were the grantee and the monies would be awarded to us and then they would be contracted out. And the way that we did it is the way that we've done other grants in the past, which was as a pass-through. So basically, we said to the Winuski Family Center, hey, you're, you're going to be the provider, tell us how you're going to use the dollars. We even had them kind of cut us out as the middleman and do some of the communication with the agency to make it easier. While this was happening, there was little to no guidance coming from the Agency of Education about how to write, um, uh, the, the grant. So in the end, what happened was we, we should have taken, uh, the, 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 the terms of the grant and we should have put it out to bid. And said, here's the dollars, here's what they're for, it's a competitive bidding process. We would have taken those bids in, we would have consulted, uh, with the, we would have looked at the bids, uh, determined who we were going to give them to. And then executed a contract after that and then disseminated the monies. If we had actually done that, it probably wouldn't have happened until February or March at least. Which then we would have been in a similar bind if we wouldn't have been able to pay them any dollars for the services that they had rendered from August until whenever. So that's really the procurement and the, um, us being the, the recipient and then putting it out for a contracted competitive bid were the areas in which we, uh, did not meet standards. However, I would share that blame with the agency in that they did not provide good guidance to us on the standards.
They actually sent out a letter of note that they had missed.
Yeah.
What, what was the?
So what happened after we, I started working with Leila, who oversees the federal part of the grant, she, she started looking at us, she's like, oh, she was, I think we have an issue here. And I'm, okay, so she reached out to the AOE and immediately the AOE sent out an email to anyone that got the grant and said, there, there is a problem here. People are not using this grant in the way that the feds intended you to use it. Once, like Sean said, we were told we were strictly a pass-through, they, they were telling all kinds of schools that. And so we, we were just doing what was best for kids. And it came back because we didn't have the guidance from the AOE of what really needed to happen, that's why we have a material weakness right now, because we didn't have the guidance. And we, we didn't slow down to take the time to go through it thoroughly, we wanted the kids to get the services they need. They still haven't figured this grant out, we're still in a holding pattern this year.
It's a three-year grant.
Three-year grant.
And we're in year two and we're still waiting on the agency to approve this year's. So, and there's, you know, yeah.
We've gone back and forth.
And we're making a decision right now because the application for year three has just been opened. So, you know, it, it, it has turned out to be, um, really difficult, it's been very stressful, um, you know, particularly for, um, Rebecca being in the middle of it. You know, between me and Robin and saying, let's do this for kids and the agency kind of saying, okay, we don't really know and don't have answers to your questions. You know, but I, I, I am comfortable in that, what Mike said at the outset, that the dollars went where they were supposed to go. There were some boxes that weren't checked along the way, we learned from that. And, um, but everything that we did was with proper intent.
And I think the only other piece to just poke at then is, is the, um, RFQ, the, the going out to seek bids, is there anybody else, I mean, this kind of has to be in town, right? This is not like we can have a provider in Richmond or Montpelier bid and and win this, it, it. It, it, you're kind of moving kids to the space.
One of the restrictions is the LEA, the Local Education Agency. So, we are that for the Winuski Family Center and, or anybody in Winuski has to be the recipient of the grant.
Had we put this out to bid, would we have gotten anybody other than the Winuski Family Center that would have been able to handle?
Highly doubtful.
And we were able to work with the AOE, one of the, I had a lengthy conversation with Cassandra Ryan and Emily Byrne. And, you know, my, my question about the procurement was because the federal procurement has changed greatly in the last eighteen months. So there was a lot of new stuff coming down the pike. And because of the way the grant was written, um, when I met with them this fall, they said we had to solicit for services. We didn't have to do an RFP, we didn't have to get three bids, we didn't have to get a waiver. Because the way the grant was written, it was written with the intent for this one provider. We did have to solicit for services and get a rate from them and to make sure the rate was equitable, was fair and reasonable. And we did get a rate and we did negotiate it down, um, some because we felt that we needed to, to pass the laugh test, as you would say, Mike, um, with this. So, the actual procurement, we know, we know what we need to do for that now. It doesn't have to be a formal one like we've done in the past. They've given us the blessing for, ask for the services, get a price, make sure it's fair and that you can defend it. And I, I think we're at the point where we've done that and I feel comfortable with that. The problem is the way the grant was written, it was still written based on the fact that it was salaries and benefits, looking like we were gonna actually pay those people. When our intent is really to have a contracted service. So we're in an amendment process now to have the contract, to have all the salaries and benefits amended from those line items in the grant to put into contracted services. And that's what we're waiting from them, for them to reply to right now.
Given that this annual report, the, the audit that was done on the FY seventeen, are we at risk for a repeat in FY eighteen based on it being the same grant rolling over for another year?
We haven't paid anything yet.
No, because we have not, we, we have a signed agreement with the Howard Center who oversees the, um, uh, the Winuski Family Center, but we have not executed an agreement and we have not paid any dollars.
Are they providing a service?
They are.
They are going ahead and providing it, but they also are well aware, based on the conversations from the summertime, that we cannot disperse any money until, um, we get the go-ahead from the AOE. And then we move forward to execute that agreement.
Do you have any concerns that that's not gonna happen? From the AOE to allow this to?
Yeah, sure. Because we haven't got anything, until I have something in hand, I, you know?
I think if you look at the report, Mike, on pages twelve and thirteen, is my response to the material weakness and the steps that we've taken, um, and the recommendations from them so that we can prevent this from happening in the future.
All right. You know, so from a, from a material weakness perspective and the, the, um, level of anxiety I was given to have about these, this one seems to me to pass, you know, the first test, first pass sniff test of not being done for any, you know, gain on the part of somewhere else other than the, the grantees, the people providing the service, the dollars were all spent. So, at least I'm comfortable with that piece.
And I think the AOE is very comfortable with that too because their lack of guidance and, you know, they said ultimately the result came to what it needed to be.
And, and as we look down the road, we would not expect to see this again, which is one of the other root cause corrective action kind of pieces and, and we understand what happened, we know how to fix it. Or at least they're in the process of defining how, how they're, how we can fix, help fix it.
Yeah, I mean, the grant is meant to do really good work. And, you know, I totally support getting the money to support the needy children, it's just we need to make sure that we slow down and do it. Or at least have the AOE give us a little more guidance.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a tough situation where you gotta, when you get the monies available, you have the kids with the need and the lack of direct input, so.
Well, and the easy thing for year two of the grant would have been, would have been to just say, "No, we don't want any part of it." There was, you know, by the time that this was all coming down and it was becoming clearer, I don't know how the family center would have managed to survive, um, to run a program without the support. So, you know, that's why we forged ahead with year two. And it's still up in the air for year three right now and we've been, you know, talking to the Howard Center and the Winuski Family Center about that all along.
Okay. Any comments?
It was a concern, I had a highlight.
Yeah, no, as you should.
Yeah, did, did we answer your questions? I mean?
I answered it fully, like, for me, it's like, mistakes happen and I'm all right with that. It's, what are we gonna do to prevent those mistakes from happening in the future?
Right.
You know, and it sounds like you have your steps and so, um...
We, the AOE, like, hates to hear from us.
Good, good, there's nothing wrong with that. Sometimes you want people to close the door on you so you can kick it in to make a point.
No, we wanna do it right, we want, we wanna make sure that it's done right.
No, and I know, so my intention was, I thought everything was like done out of the goodness and nothing, right? But then it's the process issue, I'm a big feedback person, okay, so how do we prevent this from happening in the future? And, and, you know, we can't put all the blame on Winuski, we put.
It's a shared responsibility.
It's a shared responsibility, so I'm fine with that.
And you comfortable with the endpoint? Okay, good, because that's my concern, the, the, I'll call it wrong, but I'll put quotes on it, the, the, what doesn't go right is understood and how to move forward to make it right. We, we shouldn't see it again in that, what we're reading. All right, good. So we have to approve the, um, audit report. I would accept, uh, motion to re, uh, accept the, the audit report as documented. Any other discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, next item here is a budget cycle reflection. I don't know that we need to definitely spend a lot of time, but I would like to take two minutes to reflect back through everything that we've done, uh, anything done differently. I thought it was again done with, uh, we, we didn't get a huge, you know, fifteen percent increase and the sky will fall if you cut this kind of a, an initial budget. It was done with integrity to, you know, this is, this is, uh, what we think is reasonable, these are the increases. I think we're all still getting, even after all this time, getting used to the, the revenue side of this coming in late in the game after the expense side is already, uh, talked about. So that, that's always a tough one to, to bridge upfront. But any other thoughts on things that we could have done any differently?
I'm sorry.
The balancing of education in this process is really, really helpful, so, just good work.
The balancing of?
The education that we received as a board, you know what I mean, like the explanation and the kickoff.
The need and, yeah.
The only thing I'd add, and this is a process improvement thing, is that we didn't do a good job on getting community input and education this time around. And I think, um, in the future, we should just work in this, and I'm taking ownership on this.
Yeah, we all.
We all take ownership, but I think in the long run, um, it'll be easier when we go up and explain the budget if we have other community members who can say, I mean, we can always point to the videos or whatnot that we've done, but no one watches those.
I mean, you kind of gotta go on that assumption, right? And that it's not highly watched.
Glad you pointed that, because it has been a practice of ours in the past to have.
A budget buddy.
Budget buddies.
Trying to, trying to get at least two to four people.
Like, let's make sure we have the commitments before we get those things started.
And I'm not gonna lean on the statement that you reach out and invite generally the population and nobody shows up. That's not the place to lean, it is to accept the responsibility to go out and find somebody to help.
And this is kind of taking part of some of the student focus groups that we did, like, have faith that the students actually need to learn this and kind of hear and let them be part of that and, and just trust that. I know we got our student reps here, but they're, you know, potentially, we should just make that invitation just so that they can hear the process, so that they can understand some of the constraints that the school district has.
Part of a civics education in the background besides.
And I think it'd actually be helpful to have other ones because you guys don't come to all the budget meetings, because there are so many more in December, that it would be nice to spread that, you know? Because we did have some students saying, "More voices," like, there's some great opportunities for this.
Yeah, voice, having a voice assumes that you have an understanding of something to have a voice about.
Right.
And that's one particular piece that may be worthwhile.
And I think Sean knows that I'm really, you know, been excited about this flexible pathways thing and, and I'm going like, "Okay, like, how can we build that in as a flexible pathway as part of the, you know, an education component to help?" This is, because I actually told the students, like, the ultimate goal is, is that we want people to be more engaged so that we don't have to rely on school board members getting burnt out at the end of their terms.
Yeah. It's be civics and civil discourse.
GP.
The GP.
Yeah.
So, um, so that's just me reflecting back.
Yep, no, that's, that's a very valid, uh, a valid, um, observation. And yeah, we did not have a lot of other community involvement. On the, on the flip side of that, I think we've come up with a budget that is ultimately affordable across most of the, most of the population, especially when we compare, when, when we look outside of our, of our borders. So, I don't think it's a irresponsible budget to, to try to pass. With that, did you want to take a?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, there was two documents that I, I think I put at everybody's chair. The one is the annual report, which is now out and about around town, will be posted on our website, which has a lot of good information in it, most of it financial, including, uh, audit results and, um, a breakout of the proposed FY nineteen budget in a variety of ways like you guys were looking at during the cycle. So there's that, and it also has a handy listing of all the different ways that the community can engage in, um, learning more about the budget. And then, um, the budget flyer, which, um, is also a whole, a part of the process. And, uh, Ann Linton, um, has helped with this. Mike did some of the writing this year and, uh, I did, uh, some of the writing this year and added the, the pictures. And so, um, this is a color copy that we produced in-house. We'll do the black and white copies, um, that will be mailed to, uh, you know, every dwelling in the city um, the last week of February prior to the vote, early March.
So I'll take a, take a peek at it, when does this get sent to the?
Probably, uh, end of tomorrow, because they've got a, yeah.
Okay, gotta pay attention. All right, I'll take a, take a run through just to, is basically the same format.
I spent most of the day running through it and back and forth with Ann, so, but I would still, yeah, if somebody wants to take a, another crack at it, that would be great.
Okay. We're gonna have to pitch it a couple times here over the next, uh, couple of weeks, so get into the detail. All right, any other, uh, thoughts on, uh, budget cycle?
All right.
Destiny, turn it over to the student report.
Well, happy Valentine's Day.
Happy week coming tomorrow.
Thanks Rebecca, see you tomorrow.
Send them our best.
Oh, it's okay. Just gonna keep it short today. All right, so, um, sorry, with, as a district, Winuski has raised over eighteen, eight thousand dollars for Special Olympics Vermont through the Penguin Plunge. So, wanted to give a quick shout-out to all the students at Falcote who participated.
Especially, it was freezing.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the coldest day ever.
It was cold.
Were you there?
I was.
Eight thousand dollars, yeah, over eight thousand dollars, so to say. Yeah.
Almost nine, that's awesome.
And, um, in the elementary schools, classes are, um, continuing to work on their PBL projects focusing on cross-curricular learning. So, yeah, so just to get an idea, I think our first grade class has been doing a project on sound and they're presenting their learning by creating instruments and forming a band. They work together like to create songs and stuff and then perform to an audience, so, you know, getting in front and doing some public speaking. So that's pretty cool. Moving on, we had two high school student finalists for the Bernie Sanders essay contest. Um, they were rewarded, uh, by being able to participate in a roundtable discussion with, um, Bernie.
Got their picture taken right here on Twitter. That's so exciting.
Yeah, I think the two topics were sexism and immigration, so congratulations to them.
Whoop, whoop.
Who are your students?
Uh, Caitlin Little and Vajada Dehl, yeah, a junior and a senior.
Excellent.
Um, and Heidi has do, been doing an excellent, oh, sorry. Heidi has been doing an excellent job with having students look into other opportunities outside of Winuski such as Governor's Institute. I think we had record-breaking numbers of students who were accepted and applied to the program. Uh, she does a really good job with making sure that money isn't a barrier and helps with students with financial aid. Some students could go for just ten dollars when the program costs like seven hundred or somewhere around there. So she did a really good job with that, and that happened last weekend. Report cards were mailed, um, to the entire high school and middle school and such. And, uh, I think what was very interesting was, uh, during one of our community meetings as a high school, we all sat in the PSC and were told about what was expected for students who were graduating with profici, proficiencies. So, we had a run-through of G, all the GPs and all the GXs, and I haven't been able to sit through that, and that was really interesting. Uh, I heard feedback that, that was very, very helpful because students have just been going through the system lately. Like freshmen, they just go through it with, without knowing, "Oh, I don't have a grade in this class." And then they get the report card saying, "What does a three mean, what does a four mean, what's a GP?" And I think that idea is still floating around, so we had Mr. Webb come up and give kind of an informative session. And a lot of students said that they wanted, I don't know where I would bring this up, but, um, a lot of students said, uh, that they wanted to have one for their parents as well. Because there is information on a piece of paper that is mailed to the parents as well. But through words, it's kind of hard, you wanna see the images, because they had the graph showed up for the students, the data, what is, and then, you know, you get to see it visually, and I think that's what we need for parents as well. I think, since I have a brother who is a freshman in high school as well, my parents would love to see that. Maybe we have some translators there, uh, so, you know, we have those cool gear pieces, that would be cool to have there too. Just something that I heard, I think that would be helpful, and I know it's like halfway through the year already, but there are still some freshmen who are going through the system not knowing what they have to afford.
Well, it's also a brand-new
Yeah.
visual for learning that, I know from, as a parent's perspective, I got no information before it came out, so you don't know how to read it, you can't tell the story. And I was wondering how the students, like, if the students had gotten that information of like, what the fives, fours, three, you know, what, what those mean.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think they gave the session after the report cards came out. So we got, or bef, I think it was before, actually. So they, students can go home and explain to their parents, but sometimes, you know, the parents wanna be there to see the visual themselves instead of having the piece of paper telling them.
Did y'all know it was coming out, the different visual?
Uh, according to my brother, no. I didn't know either.
Yeah.
So, um, I just knew I was getting the regular credit-based one, and that's about it, because I'm still graduating with a credit, so.
I still think this is one of those things that you cannot over, that this, you, you don't wanna make a change like this. And leave it, anything to chance or guessing or assuming, so, I, that's a good point, so.
You can under-communicate.
You will under-communicate, period. It's, yeah, so.
Not happening was under, yeah.
That's all I have.
And, and that's not a, that's not a thing, I mean, anytime you make this kind of a change, you're gonna get to a point where it, you can communicate until you think you've got it and you're still gonna get some that need more, but.
Well, it's also interesting about design, because in terms of student voice, I mean, the whole design of a report card is to tell the story of student learning. And I'm wondering about your voices in the design, of seeing the different designs of how this, because it's so brand-new, this new design, is how does this, for students, how does this communicate your learning? Does it, does it tell the story you would want to be told about your learning? From, and so looking at that, that piece of paper communicates not only to a student about your learning, but also communicates to parents, but do we really understand the story that's being told? Um, and I don't think that, there was, was it, it doesn't seem like there was any voice other than from the teacher's lens that went into that design. And it might have been helpful having some different lenses, you know, looking at it before it comes out and you're looking at it in the mail, like, wait, what?
That's not to say it's stagnant. That's not to say it's stagnant.
Right, no, it's, right, because you can also see that with the graduation proficiencies and stuff that. It's incorporating it, it just was a hard story to read.
Yeah.
Because it wa, we didn't have all the information we needed, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think you're right, I mean, this, we as a school, the greatest instrument we have to help parents is students. So, if they walk out of here like, understanding what that piece of paper, what that report means, and then you look at it, you know, I mean, you're. More informed and in education, so you are, are starting in a different place, but a lot of our parents look at it and don't know. But if you can say to your parents, like, oh yeah, this is, we went over this in advisory or whatever, and this is what it means, then, then we're moving in the right direction.
But even as a person in education, I got it, I was like, wait, what? Just because it's so brand-new, and it is so different, which is innovative, right, like, we are bringing to life the GPs and the GXs, yeah.
It's here, plan, do, reflect.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Feedback loop.
Someone's to get the feedback.
Feedback loop.
How do we do the feedback?
Yep.
Plan, do, check, and act, you wanna check, because you may be okay. What else you got?
That's all I got, is ending with that, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm just gonna comment that that last piece is exactly. What I would expect for student voice, coming through from, from you and, you and Alex and your successors and. And even more of it, so we greatly appreciate it, like, the input to, to our friends here, so you've had a good night tonight. We greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
That's why we invite you, that's why we keep inviting you back.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Good. Alright, we got two first readings, uh, policies, hold child in school wellness, um. Was alluded to earlier, and, uh, course offerings and class size, so let's take the first one first. Dig this up here, sorry. So first on the wellness piece, it looks like, uh, some adjustments had already been made to try to. Align this with what we do, it didn't look significantly different than the, than the model.
No, it's not significantly different, there's some.
Especially with the changes that have been.
Yeah.
Updated already.
There's kind of some updates to language, you know, in that policy statement about the Vermont School Wellness Policy Guidelines. Um, that have been updated and year changes, and then, um. You know, you can see some of the italicized words and phrases which are suggested, uh, changes such as in I, uh, B. The word health being added there. There are also, I, I think that one of the biggest changes comes on the next page. Uh, in, what is, part three, goals for other school-based activities and part H. And this was, I think, uh, JC actually alluded to it kind of quickly, it's a straight add, but it's an important one. Around medical home and dental home, which is something that, uh, our nurses do, but it's a really important. It's an important piece of wellness and health, is making sure that, that families are, are connected, um, you know, to a primary care physician and, uh, a dental home. So that, I think, is a, a useful add.
Okay, as, as we start looking at our, uh, school-based.
Health.
Healthcare, this obviously still fits, it just makes it a little easier for the, to, to actually make it a reality, right?
Right.
Okay.
I just noticed the nutritional guidelines during the school days, twelve AM.
That's a, um, that's federal.
That's federal, so, okay.
Yeah.
Y'all like work really long days.
I que, I questioned that with JC too, I was like, are you sure you didn't mean twelve PM or something? Nope, that's, yep.
Alright, and, and the rest of that same section C there, that, um, we in pretty good compliance there as far as other?
Yes, so, the, um, uh, we do allow fundraisers. That, um, students and groups will sometimes, uh, run fundraisers with food, like, for instance, we have a really yummy one once or twice a year of like. Um, cultural foods that Peace Jam does, you know, and you can go down and get just delicious, you know. So, and then there are things like today for Valentine's Day with chocolate roses and things like that, so. Um, I feel like we are, um, we are in compliance and, um, we still allow ourselves to kind of be human beings and be a school. Um, and not get overly.
Be a human being.
Wrapped up in rules.
Yeah, we still have little Hershey bars even when we're talking about wellness on Valentine's Day. Um, so, yeah, I mean, there's a balance to be had there, I think.
Yeah, yeah, good, that's.
Yeah, because even the kids are like, can't we just have a, a, like, elementary school, right, like, wait. Can we ha, we're not gonna be able to eat our, um, Valentine candy that we get, you know, that you have to wait and save at home, so it is nice to have some.
Mm-hmm.
Space for that, but obviously it's nice to pull back on.
Right.
All the circuit used to flow.
Yeah, and I think that's where we've made some real strides, is, it's, it's no longer, you know, food is not used as a, as a reward regularly, you know, uh, those kinds of things, yeah.
The other, the other question that I had on this one, um, under the policy implementation, section six B here. This is a reporting out at least annually to the board and the district's compliance. Is that something that we do, is that something that we, we have? I, my comment here is, do we have it on the annual agenda, I guess the question is, do we need it on?
We, we don't.
Put it as an item in the focus on learning and capture it under the wellness piece each, I mean, this, this was a fantastic update.
Right.
You know, I don't know if that's a, a regular update that this, but if we have this in here, how do we? How do we do that?
Yep. Well, my, my suggestion would be that, um, either if you feel, if the board feels like you want something annually that, that. We could put that into the annual agenda plan and, uh, it probably could just be included as a report. Um, and then you could decide whether you want to just keep it in consent or pull it out for discussion, or. We could, um, do something every other year, so change the language to biannually or whatever, and then have more of like what. Uh, JC came and did.
And, and so if it were, uh, just an annual report that we put into consent for an update on what we're doing annually to comply with the policy that we have. I mean, that, that seems like it might be a, a better oper, I mean, assuming JC would do it and you're, tell us, tell us how you're doing here, right?
Yeah, and it really, I mean, right below that, it talks about including, you know, it's, it's wanting to make sure that, uh, about pri, prices of meals and things.
Right.
Which really is not a, an issue here.
It isn't here now and today.
Right now.
Right, and it's just to make sure that we stay.
But if the CEP went away or whatever, then yes, could be.
Right.
I think it would be great to do this annual, since we feel like wellness is at the root of being ready to learn, that we, we should have this. Showed to us annually.
In, in person or a, a letter and a, an update and a consent is, okay.
It's fine, I think just reporting on it, and I think it, it's great to always hear wellness to, maybe coming forward wellness every other year, because again, we, I mean, I think that we've defined this is, is a route. To access to learning. Right?
I think that was more than obvious tonight.
Right. And, and, and it's been a, a specific focus for our district is to become well. Both food security, health, all of it, right, the whole game, and having that healthy conversation and seeing the whole, the variety of ways to be well. So, it is important to have this, us to be able to see the data matching our focus on wellness.
I'm gonna just pop it in here.
I got it too, so we can throw it in there.
What was the policy number on this one, sorry? It's on here, five, one, four, six, so. Okay.
Right there.
Alright, I'm gonna have to remember to come back to that, I got myself all twisted up, alright. I gotta know, me and the Google Drive don't get along very well.
You are?
No, the Google, the Google person, okay, so, we'll take those, uh, um. And have those changes updated and solidified, any other comments or thoughts on that one? Okay, down to, uh. Course offerings and class size. Thoughts on this guy, let, let me turn it to you, Vereshon, on this and the, the model, I think, were. Pretty, pretty close if I.
Yeah, very similar, and then, you know, then we have the second page that gives our, our kind of minimums and, and optimal, and, um. There is some variance, you know, and I think so, a, a lot of that has to do with, um, uh, our mobility of students, you know, so, for example. Uh, in second grade, right now today, when I pulled the numbers, we have four classes in second grade and we have a class of twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Okay, and that will probably change, and at the same time, you know, we have in fourth grade, the, three classes of seventeen each, you know, so that's like. Pretty much perfect in that middle of that optimal range, um, you know, so I think, um. We're in a pretty good, pretty good place of being in compliance with the, the class size chart that's, that's delineated in the procedures.
Okay.
I don't know how to plan yet for all the rhetoric that has been happening about ratios and things, you know, but it is something that could impact this policy in the future. It just, there's not enough information that's come out of Montpelier about that to react to yet.
Right, that's gonna be an interesting one, um, ratios are always. Hard and fast and end up usually somehow getting in the way somewhere. Um, I'm concerned, it's just a couple of comments that I, that I had written down overall are. When you consider our class size, I mean, it's interesting, you got, you know, the seventeens down there, but we got a high school section in here. I've got an I-Lab class of one, because I'm personally learning this particular thing and nobody else is. That, that's interesting, but when you get into class size policy, how do you, how do you work with that?
Right.
You know, I mean, it just goes back to the eating chocolate once a year and not feeling bad about it, how do you?
Or when you don't have classes.
Well, I go back to.
If you don't have blocks anymore, you don't really have class sizes, you know, when the learning is more open and more student-centered and personalized. You know, we're, we're not quite there yet, the I-Lab is a microcosm of that.
Right.
I mean, the way we do it right now for the, for the I-Lab is, students are scheduled into class and there may be every single kid in that I-Lab during that block. Their transcript's gonna say something different, because it's gonna say I-Lab, um, you know, Lake Champlain Water Study. And I-Lab, um, Engineering Apprenticeship. But they would all be considered in the I-Lab class at that period.
Conglomerate.
Yeah.
I mean, that makes, that's kind of what I expected there, but as we move deeper into personalized learning, and I'm, I'm going back to some of the Ca, Capital. Project stuff, you, you take the entire second grade over here and you blow all the walls out of it. Just take them all out, you got this big space, you got a gathering, this, uh, you know, I'm just, some of the things that we had talked about, you got a, a small gathering area. You got meeting rooms, you got, you know, individual, you know, so, the whole thing is, is an interesting concept going forward. But for today, we're covered. How would you cover, and I go back to a personal example, how would you cover six kids wanting and willing and able to take a calculus class and a math teacher willing to teach it? Is that allowed? With a ten, fifteen to twenty?
Um, you know. Yeah, I mean, so.
These are just guidelines across a broader scheme, right?
Yes.
Good, that's what I wanted, that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna le, I'm gonna leave that there because that's what I wanted to hear, I didn't want to hear that if, we're not gonna.
I have not seen the, uh, class size chart police, uh, around recently.
There you go, okay. Alright, that's, I got more out of that calculus class with six kids, I'm glad they didn't kill it, best teacher ever, so, anyway. Thing that blew me out of ca, out of engineering in college was calculus, but that's a different story. Alright, so, class size policy, anything other than what we have here, everybody good? Enough of my personal history, sorry. Alright, uh, moving right along, we did the, uh, meeting with the legislators, uh. Our last two board monitoring reports before we get into, uh, review and revision of those have already been done. Uh, we got an approve on a handling of operational complaints, uh, we've brought this one forward once before. The adjustment here, I think, we wanna, the, the only piece in here that I wanted to bring to attention and that we can touch on it later. So handling of operational complaints is when people complain about to, to us as a board. For things that are going on in a school, that we push them to the right place first, and I think we've all had a little bit of interaction with that. Um, and Alex, you're the, the newcomer here, that's pretty clear, at least the progression of, of steps from a, from a high level. The only one I wanted to talk about specifically for me and was four point three three, and that was. I didn't put any data, I didn't put any conclusion, but I did put an aside in there that I think we want to get rid of that section. So I would advocate that we leave that one as it's written now. And take up the policy to eliminate that section, I, I believe that sounds like we're completely abdicating our responsibility and saying, nothing comes to the board. Everything stays down, uh, at the other levels, that, that's the way I read that piece of it, so either it's, to me, it was written poorly. Or if we just eliminated it, it wouldn't end up changing any of the policy and, and the, and the method by which this would, uh. Be worked through, so I would say that if we approve, we leave that section open and. Take up the policy itself as it's written and see if that's what we really intended at a later date.
And so what would you like it to say under the interpretation data conclusion sections?
I think the only thing I might put in there would be, um. Section to be. To be revisited. In the next revision for elimination, I, I don't know that we want to take up that change here, but. When we do get to it, it'll be a policy.
So would it be then kind of like an asterisk and leave the interpretation, the data and conclusion out?
Empty, yeah, yeah, and just leave, leave the aside that we take it up later as a piece, thoughts?
So the, the thought is that we look, we look at policy four point three point three and determine whether we keep it or we just delete it.
I think said slightly differently, we look at policy four point three and understand whether four point three point three really belongs. As it's written, or if we need to have a different interpretation on it. Or a different wording on it to get to the meeting, I didn't, I don't, I don't think it. I think if we just eliminated it, it wouldn't make a whole lot of difference in the policy. It's still making sure that people go to the right place with the right complaints and have the right flow, that just sounded to me like we're just completely abdicating our responsibility and saying, forget it. Forget it, I don't want to deal with it.
So we're gonna do this next month?
No, we'll take it up over the course of the next.
Okay.
Calendar year, uh, to, to do it at some point in time, but we'll, we'll put that on the, on the list of things we need to do. That work?
Yes.
Alright, any other comments on four three? Alright, so I would accept the motion to accept, uh, policy four three with the adjustment that we had just said, made. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post? Alright. And then four eight, Paul, um, governance, uh, investment, this is us making sure that we have. Available to us the funds to educate ourselves enough to run, nope. Jeez, to ensure that this district is run well, we are not gonna run the. Jeez, to ensure that this district is run well, we are not gonna run the district. My goodness, that was a Freudian slip that came-
Careful, careful what you ask for.
Right out of left field. Nah, I gotta, I got, I got my job. So um this one seemed pretty straightforward to me. We do a lot of our work to decide this in one budget meeting, how much do we need? We spend the time talking about our education needs in our retreats. Sean does a great job helping to gather up the folks that we need to do the education that we think we need. It's always the most interesting piece of this is understanding how to educate ourselves on the things we don't know what we need to be educated on, right? How do you, how do you see those coming, right? So um this is a review and a discuss. Any other thoughts on this one?
Any comments there that should we add this about the training materials? I think you can just strike out that first sentence and just start off with that under data. Training materials are out. You don't need that first sentence there.
Okay. Oh, right, right, yes, that is a, that is a, yes.
That's a straight paste and copy.
Yeah. 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 Sorry about that.
All right.
So with that, thank you for catching that, by the way.
I got it.
Does that stay when you write it in?
Yeah, it does.
All right, I would uh accept the motion to accept policy four eight interpretation as written with the, with the one adjustment that Alex just mentioned.
It was not up for approval this month.
Oh, wasn't it for approval?
It says discuss review, because I think this was, I think it was the first month.
Ah, okay, so we'll have this come back through consent.
Yeah.
Just eliminate the first sentence in the second paragraph, the data paragraph.
All right, appreciate that. All right, last one uh here, community engagement pieces. Um, added a couple of ongoing items in here, so if we can have just some brief um updates. One is, uh, recent community activities are, are, are interesting. I mean, anybody got anything major to report? The bottom two to me are the ones who would like to just briefly run through. Community engagement forums, if you guys-
We did.
Started it, yeah, it sounded like you had some-
Community conversations.
All right.
With, um, we had two days worth of communications with students. I think we, we talked to sixty students.
Wow.
If my math was right and you're the math guy.
Around fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
That's close.
It's close, we round up, at least I know which way to go. Um, we also, um, I guess that was the big one because the last time we did it, uh, we had a conversation with the PTO. We, um, the PTO meeting was in the beginning of February, right? Or was it January?
It was January.
And we've scheduled to have an actual community conversation um with them in March, the first Wednesday of March. But this one was our, our launch of actually engaging in uh community conversations. And we started with students because they're the most important.
Right, and, and um just so to give you a sense of the protocol that we followed, um, with the two student groups, we did basically eight focus groups of about six to eight students. The first day was with middle school students that ranged all from sixth grade to eighth grade and then the second day was just high school students all the way from um freshman to seniors. And we had a, a question protocol, just to describe it, where the middle school students, we asked four questions, uh, five questions. What are you proud of as a Winuski student? What are the strengths of the school district? What are the areas that you think are areas of improvement? What does student-centered mean and where does that occur in the school? And are you excited about um high school? And the high school students, we um did the same, the first four questions were the same. And how to engage in terms of the community and how we did this was, we used a lot of sticky notes. Basically, with each question we asked, we gave a two-minute quiet period where they could write their thoughts out on the sticky notes, which was the fastest way to kind of gather the data. But then they would share their thoughts and we would kind of drive some of the conversation on that. What we then took with the sticky notes is basically we put it in an Excel worksheet and kind of labeled it, just stored all the information on an Excel worksheet and then kind of labeled, where did we get this information from? Sixth to eighth grade chats or high school chat. And what you're seeing here is not what I would call high-level like um-
Data analysis.
Data analysis, but it's a good way first kind of looking at the preliminary data. And, and, and I think I handed, I hope you have it out there, and it's basically just looking at the word clouds of what students are really proud of. And I think it was very important for us to start off with like strengths and what we're proud of. Because I think it, if you've all heard me talk, I'm a big continuous improvement person and I think continuous improvement actually implies that you have strengths and they're the things that you're really good of. And I think in some of the things that we were kind of worried about were that students were coming in thinking that like there were only negatives. And changing the dialogue on that so that we can build upon our strengths. And so the first word cloud that you see in front of you in the first page is basically, what are the students proud of in Winuski? And if you see the word diversity, friends, community, I, that's great.
Teachers.
The teachers.
That's really cool. Yeah, and the way we also started, we also had them um think about themselves first to say where you are right now and where you may see yourself in the next five to six years. What do you want to know? What inspires you? What do you love in the world? Where do you, what do you want to do with your hands and where do you want to go with your feet? So we just had to, we got them sort of in their own, hopefully gave them the little mindset to sort of get in there so that then they could come out of that and say, what am I proud of? What are we doing well? What do we need improvement on? And this one's cool that you did this one together, one is the heart, Winuski has heart, right?
Yeah.
Uh, that um diversity, community, school, friends, teachers, you know, sports, that those really popped out. Learning, learning, learning's a little thick over there.
A little, it could be thicker, but you know-
It could be thicker for hybridism, yeah.
But it's all right, we got, like, if you think about the community and what the Winuski has heart, it's been part of that and that's strong. Um, so it was important. And then what you see through the pictures is the first question, I, I split it up, but then like, what are the strengths of the schools? The first one is middle school, you see sports kind of being bigger on that. I just want to comment just on the record so that if any teachers are watching this, I admire the middle school teachers. After spending a full day, I can um-
You're exhausted.
Exhausted with the middle schools. But with that said, there's a lot of, you can see the talent and the diversity and why this, it's hard. Because in a small school, there's a wide range of um skill levels, but also race after. But there's a lot of great thing out of these students and you can see it in the care. And one of the things that we had asked every student is, how long have you been in the school district? And that was important to us to kind of gauge on their learn, you know, what they thought and how they stayed. And we saw it, so-
And most had been here since kindergarten. You know, like, really, it was the, the, the fewest had been here for maybe one to three years.
Right.
But the majority of the kids we saw definitely from kindergarten to elementary school, yeah.
So you could see the elements of, the, the product of our school district and something that we should really be proud of. Um, the strength of our high school is just like faculty.
Faculty is so bold. That was amazing, is the relation, and we both walked away really inspired. Because the cool thing about doing middle school for one day and high school for one day is the, the, the same sort of things we were hearing from every middle school group and every high school group. Like, there were some common, major common themes that they all communicated group by group by group and not hearing each other, right?
And remember how we did it with the post-it notes where students had to write their thoughts out first?
Yes.
It was independent. Yes, the conversation led to build off upon it, but it was independent purposely so that we could hear every voice so that we knew that we weren't biasing certain students.
So it was interesting to see some of the common things that they were saying.
Right.
But the faculty, the, the pride, like, just feeling so supported and heard and seen. They could go to teachers for anything, they knew they were there for them, that would help them outside of school, that they wanted them to be successful. That was truly what came out um from the high school students, yeah.
And so, and then I, we can share and talk a little bit about the areas of improvement.
Did you see the high school students? Math lab.
And I think-
So it was, but it was, but what's so cool is that no matter what needs improving for the high school, that it's based on relationships, right? The teaching climate and the student climate seem to be jiving in that, in the high school. So whatever needs to be improved? It's possible, oh my gosh, there is a, a fertile ground to have those types of conversations.
Yeah, and, and I think in the long run, when we do this, I'm not gonna just present you word clouds to this.
Right, this is one to give you a preliminary shot of-
Because one of the things, we, we, at the end of each round of questions and focus groups, we actually ask the students, please ask any questions to us. And the most popular question on all the levels was, what are you gonna do with this information that we're gonna give? And that took me to a sign of like, we have a responsibility and I'm hoping that we can feed this back so that they can see small changes, to show that we really cared about their voice. And so, you know, I'll probably spend a little weekend with Tori to just kind of want to do a summary, like really do an in-depth more analysis with themes because we have all the data. And kind of give, and, and knowing that Tori and I have an education background, we can kind of give an influence to make it fair, because I don't, I know, like, I don't want the math lab teacher to go like, you know, oh, they think it's horrible because they're-
It was slight shifts, like, it was really cool what they had to say and it wasn't like, burn it down, right? You know, and I think that was cool to really hear the language was, the possibilities in that too. It wasn't like it was like-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, and you can see just for your own purpose, the student-centeredness, but the thing that like also is just a big part of all this is just the levels of communications and, and what students' perception of what the next level is. Uh, my funniest one was like, your students, we talk about high school students and, you know, you, you gave them the flexibility and they're now throwing the gauntlet back at us because they want to be challenged even more. That's refreshing, right? And, and, but their challenge is weird in the sense of, I think one of the common ones that they, they want more midterms and finals and more deadlines.
Yeah, so if you could like just do more midterms and finals, and it was because they have this perception that college is all about midterms and finals and they have no practice in it now because of this proficiency-based system, right? But the, the interesting thing is Alex would be like, where are you getting this information? That colleges are all about midterms and finals. I think the SAT was one of the relevant ones because, but that's something that can be a two-day workshop on how do you take an SAT, right? I mean, that, that's more sort of-
Right.
Constraint, but they really do have this broad perception, almost like what he was saying about um college. We all know how this idea that col- it's, what do you know about college? It's expensive. What do you know about college? Midterms and finals.
Right, and, and, and I think from all of us, that isn't, if we're preparing our students for the workforce of X, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, there's no job that's gonna give you a midterm and final to succeed at life. There's projects, there's problem-based learning, critical thinking, all those things. And so somehow the perception of education has now gone down to, which hurts a little bit personally. I think that's not the point of education, the point of education is, you know, so-
So sport, I like, uh, projects and choice was also big, like, they did see where they had their voice, which is in, um, I don't know if like middle school, but like I-Lab was obviously one of the big ones for voice, but for middle school too, it was in classes that did, like, well, just recently sort of working conditions, but within that, they got to make choices about what they went into deeper, you know, and um that was, they definitely picked up on where they do have voice and choice and, and places where they don't. SIM was a big thing for middle school. You know, like certainly with choice and voice, that was, they, they really liked that a lot, yeah.
So once again, like, there's a lot of, and I think what will help with this kind of input is kind of help us see the disconnect or whether there is a connection between the community, because the students have, it made me happy and proud that the schools were a sense of a community of diversity, they grew that appreciation of all that. And, and, and in some ways, the students are leaders on that. And I think in, um, one of the comments that I had made is, like, I can see that they have the potential to make this world a better place. And unfortunately, I don't think we tell that to our students enough.
Right.
We tell, you know, there's too many of the millennials and I'm not, please know that I am not always happy-go-lucky and just full of like happy praises, like, I'll tell you what it is, like, when I think I'm like, huh? Right, but there was a lot of good hope and I think these are gonna help us move and have stronger conversations with the community. And, and we'll probably have the same type of four questions um to help drive that conversation. You know, what makes you proud of our district? Um, because literally after the end, I almost, I told Tori, if we were smart, we should have probably videotaped some of these comments so that we have these little snippets on our website to say, um, you know, what are we doing well? Instead of like the negative, right? That's what we always do, right? What do we need, what's wrong with our schools? There's a lot of good and like we should continue to build upon that.
And the way they articulated it was really insightful. And I think that's where some of those snippets of recording voices so that you could hear students actually saying what they're saying, because the way they put those words together from their own experience and perspective was important versus us retelling you what they're saying. That was really important. I think too for a middle school, while faculty was not the same, they didn't have the same relationships yet, you know, that what they really want is relationships, you know? And I think that that's what's so great about hearing about wellness and about giving students choice and voices because of their adolescent brain, they were just speaking to what is bigger than they are, which is a way their brains are changing for relationships. And that was something they wanted more of. And I think the biggest thing that they felt was they were restricted in the two teams that somehow they, they lost relationships. Um, so that was certainly a concern for them. Pair relationships and, and that, we actually looped back around to some high school students because we got that the next day and, and asked them about that because it came up so much. And they were like, oh yeah, that was tough, like, being separated, because you didn't get to meet new kids coming in during that time. And, but what was lovely about that improvement was it was based on wanting to know each other. You know, that's what was really driving it, which is why sports for middle school came out so strongly is because this is where they get to meet and, and enjoy, and enjoy each other. But the other part about sports, which was so lovely, was that both high school and middle school could say, but we learn how to use discipline across the board. We learn how to work hard and we learn how to be together. So they get to learn how to be together and actually, they were articulating a really constructive way of being together, not just like hanging out, but like working hard together as a team. And so that's what's really cool about this middle school thing was, this kind of shows how much, how much relationships are important to them.
Take that back two years to our discussion from the, the higher ed folks that we had in, what are you looking for in people working in teams? Uh, you know, knocking you down, you get back up.
Right, seeing yourself as a part of the bigger whole. You know your thing, but you know yourself as a part of a team, right?
And curriculum was like third or fourth.
Right, exactly, right.
We had the businesses in here.
Yeah, same thing.
Working with others, working as a team.
Their personal relationships.
So, I mean, you have a hard job because you're conflicted on these skills and then the curriculum of trying to mesh it. Well, I mean, one of the funniest comments I thought was, so what do you want more of? I want to learn how to do my taxes. There's the practical side of things. And, and, and you can tell the stereotype of our community here about, there's a working-class community, there are gonna be students who are going right into the workforce and finding that balance and some of that attitude, so um-
Because even middle schoolers, what are they looking, they want to get a job. They're, they're already thinking about where they're gonna be working, like, that was one of their most important things, was getting a job.
Right.
And, so, yeah, it was wonderful.
Moving from, I, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna comment on the passion is amazing, you guys. I can't imagine the team you make.
Yeah, it was good, we were really, we were really good.
Very different, but you got the, you've got the same endpoint.
Give those middle schoolers a run for their money.
They were, it was really fun, they, they gave us a run for our money, it was like-
Oh man, I was so tired.
Exhausted after that day, yeah.
So that's looking backwards, looking forward, um, you're gonna come to my house at some point?
Yes, so what we're gonna do next is, what we need to do is coordinate our schedules of how, where the openings between now in June, because we realize, we, I mean, now that I'm kind of in it, maybe I'm speaking for myself, but I, we want to get as many in as possible. Like, the more voices we hear, the better, because it is inspiring. And I think that it also can help, I really do think it can influence the decisions that we're, that we're making at this level, right? That's what we want, we want it to inform what, what we're doing, right? So we need to get a, a list of dates to say, here are the dates, and then we're gonna try to fill those dates.
Want a place to start?
Yes, yeah, but we're also wondering, you know, if other board members, you know, want to get in on the facilitation piece of it and maybe sit in with us on it, um-
Gotta be careful, three is a quorum.
Well, no, not, well-
No, 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 not to get-
Actually, no, it wouldn't be, would it, if you're doing something different like this? There's a, there's a line there that you can't cross.
Right, but we can have it, but what we were also thinking is, we're not gonna do it together all the time. Like, I could take one, he can take-
She's gonna get sick of me.
Right, we'll get sick of it, right? So I could take one and someone can sit with me one, just so that we're not gonna also get burned out on this.
Yep.
And I've also been thinking of other mechanism to coddle data, like, you know, can't we just leave a poster board that just has these things where you can just leave post-it notes?
Yeah, we thought about that for parent-teacher conference, the next round of parent-teacher conference. Also thinking about faculty. You know, we, we should talk about how do we get the information from the faculty, because I think it would be, again, we're not asking like, and who did what, like, you know, it's, it's more like- asking like, and who did what? Like, you know, it's, it's more like broader. What are we proud of? You know, what are we really like from their perspective? What do we really do well?
Right. And we can mark, March sixth on the voting day, right? And the other thing that we could also do, um, if you have, if you're, I don't know if your school, if the school district already has a software license for, um, survey license. So like, I, I mean, otherwise I'd just build it in Survey Monkey, which is free and try to just have that as a part of the front porch forum. Whereas just questions where we, people can just type in.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to find different mod, models of getting language. I mean, that's why I was asking about flexible pathways because we could get a student to help out, help with the translation so that we're really getting out there with community and then really kind of building out this. You can see how this could be a nice civic engagement type project. And, and I totally understand why, but you know, we can figure out smaller parts of it that can be helpful. So that it truly is, like, the other thing that I'm trying to gauge at is, is to make sure that it doesn't fall on the weight of just two school board members because this is really a community effort of all of us.
I'm more than willing to help from, from the facilitation standpoint, for sure.
It's fun too. It really is fun. Um, it just made me think though for wellness day, because teachers love sticky notes and white chart paper, right? We're really good at that stuff. Is we could, even if we're obviously going to be somewhere else, but we could, um, put up the posters and just have like a table, we could set it up so that.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And cause all we need is the posters.
We have sessions, but we also, there's time, you know.
Right, right. And people could float by.
You gotta run everywhere, you know, and we have a nice communal lunch and, you know, the end of the day, we have time to reflect and we do some gratitude practice and stuff like that. So.
And maybe we could drop by because I think it's important for them to see that your information's really important to us.
Yes.
And what I would also love about teachers, they're probably going to theme it themselves, right? They're going to find like-minded stickies that are going to stick them together and be like, yes. So that'd be a perfect day for us to see how that goes.
And part of us also want to share the good parts of what the students are saying to the faculty because once again, yeah, that's.
They really need to see this.
Yeah. I already started sharing some of that that you guys had told me.
Oh, good. Yeah. They need to know. I wish they could have had their, yeah. That was really cool.
So.
I think it feels so cool for students to know too. I was just thinking about like during like town meeting or community meeting, because sometimes like, like, oh, no one's doing anything about what I feel, you know, that's going around. So if they see this like word cloud and see, oh, see what I'm concerned about is thick and bold. So I don't know. I think it'd be cool, like maybe show the word cloud during.
And maybe in a town community meeting, what if one of us or both of us came and talked about what we did?
That'd be really cool.
And what we heard from the students, you know, because we could also create something for more voices to get involved in like a, because we have some themes, but maybe have some way where people, uh, other students could add their voices. Cause again, it was only fifty-seven, which means there was like twenty-six from one and twenty-seven, you know, so. Maybe some other, if people were like, well, I didn't see my point on there, so let me, you know, add in or, I don't know.
But yeah, you can see that we got really excited.
It is really exciting. It's super fun. It was really fun.
I mean, this is heading in the direction of understanding, how do we understand the outcomes? And how do we, how do we understand the feel?
And I did, because I was responsible for the write-up of the school board update, I did sneak the, what are we proud of as a Winuski into the newsletter. Because I thought it made a perfect sense because then it followed up with the budget. Hope you approve our budget. But I needed them to see that we have. Because here's the thing. For the, for a lot of our students, they hear metrics like retention and graduation and they hear that we're not the school, you know. And I think this gives a show of hope that like, look, these are the, you know, we talk about these things and these are what the students are saying. We'll get there, you know, that's our job to figure out how to get the metrics, kind of tell the story behind it. But once again, like my frustration with the state is not like with the schools. We have something special here. We really do. So.
They just won't be able to find jobs here later.
Yeah, I know. We got to figure that out.
So, thank you. Um, and I think, and I think if we have something that we can pop into newsletters as we go forward, even if it's a paragraph on one other piece of this and.
Yeah. And we need to get the dates so that we can offer up people to dates to do it in their houses. But also thanks to you and all the faculty that organized that, those two days, because that was, that was super helpful.
Yeah, it worked well.
Yeah, it did.
I do know that the next one we're probably definitely doing is March, uh, the next PTO meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, they're doing it the week before their actual PTO meeting. So it's not at a meeting because we did come to their meeting, but it was, they have, their agendas are so packed.
Yeah.
That they're, we're going to meet somewhere else in two.
The, uh, great. Thank you. That was, uh, that was enlightening. Again, I like, I love to see the passion that, you know, we've talked about a lot of things tonight, but that one, that one showed the passion.
For their, right? Students.
Uh, yeah. And, and making it good. The, um, capital project, um, I don't know if you've had one since the brainstorming.
I mean, I, yeah, I can give a kind of a quick update, you know, uh, I think some of that stuff and documents are in the report that people can go look at, but we, um, you know, we had the visioning workshop where we had over forty people, members of the committee invited a few folks each, and we broke into groups. We used that whole child framework that had the three elements of wellness, engagement and learning. And did some real creative thinking, just dreaming about, you know, what would we want this place to look like? And, you know, how would we build it for our needs and for our future, where the future of learning? And it was really fun. And I got fantastic feedback from people who participated. And then, um, the work came of, um, Dave and Cam from TruX Collins that we're working with. They took all of that information and, um, they kind of tallied it. And then at our recent committee meeting this week, we took the tallies and we started developing guiding statements, the statements of principle, um, based on those. And, um, we're going to do a little bit of work in our executive committee around that to, to polish those up. Cause we didn't quite finish them. And then tomorrow, tomorrow, Friday and next Tuesday are what are called programming meetings. And so we have different stakeholders like, um, special educators, ELL teachers, student groups, uh, from all of the schools, uh, will be meeting with Dave and Cam and, um, they'll be talking about specific space needs kind of based on their areas of expertise.
Good to have students in, that's nice to have.
Yeah. And so then the next step will be bringing all that programming information together, tying it into the visioning and the, uh, um, the guiding principles. And, uh, then Dave and Cam will get to go have some fun and start designing. And so this spring, we're looking at some preliminary, you know, kind of back and forth in that April, May and June meeting of, um, actually putting the, the dreams into designs. Should be really fun. And beginning more of a, um, the publicity around all of this work in earnest. We had made a conscious decision to not put too much about it in the newsletter in March, uh, to, to not muddy the, the waters with the, uh, the budget vote. So that will begin in, in April and continue with a real regular, robust report through the newsletter.
The one comment I've heard so far is, I hear you're building a new building. Not necessarily. That's, that's, uh, it's certainly a possibility, but it's what do we do? What do we, what do we need to, to do what we need to do? And, and how do we rearrange what we have? And one of the hard parts I saw in the visioning meeting is, is getting out of your head of what do we do today? To try to figure out what are we going to do tomorrow? What would that look like? What would we need that to look like in order to do it? So that's the interesting piece. Sounded like the guy's facilitating that. Really have a good handle on how to move.
Yeah.
Get a nice job. The thing forward. That's good. All right. Upcoming, um, Sean and I will be doing the budget presentation Monday. Community dinner Wednesday. And then recess here at the end of February, early March. Another budget presentation. That, oh, that's the one you're going to do at the senior center. And then the night before on March fifth, we'll do, uh, the annual meeting, uh, night before and then the date of the vote. Then our next meeting, March fourteenth, hopefully all in the seats.
Excellent.
Anything else?
So it's adjourning?
Coming, it's, it's, yeah.
Fifteen minutes left.
You're, you're late.
I know.
All right. I would accept the motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
We're moved.
All right. We are then.
We're out. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good conversation. Thank you. Matt, thank you.